Wednesday, March 31st. Welcome to the Town Council Committee of the Whole Special Meeting. We are continuing our budget deliberations. I don't know if I said the time, it's 6:04. Members present, myself, Granatoski, Bordelon, Baumgartner, Franco, Heed, Aubrey, and Parker. Members absent at this point are Melendez and Zepary, who I'm expecting both of them to be here shortly. So we have seven counselors to start the meeting. We're on to continuing the new business of 2021-2051 FYE 2022 Proposed Budget Deliberations. And our first account this evening is the Town Clerk account 1005. And this is on page 63 in your budget book. It begins on 63, your numbers are on the following page. So Counselor Baumgartner, if you could take the first account, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the amount of $333,800 for the Town Clerk function.
Second, Bordelon.
Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Bordelon for $333,800. And we have the clerk with us this evening. Madam Clerk, would you like to present your budget?
Good evening, glad to be here. How's everyone doing?
Fine, thank you for being here with us.
Well, I appreciate you making the time for me. My budget is very bare as usual. There's nothing additional except increases for things that I can't control, such as contracts, postage, ad content prices, and any unforeseen expenses which indubitably happen. I do want to point out that during the this past, the current budget this year, my office did not incur the same expenses that we have in past years for elections. And I'm talking about the two primaries and the presidential election. Normally, I would have to pay for ads in the newspaper and postage for everything that I mail out. This year, because of COVID and the change in the administration of the election, the state of Connecticut, through the Secretary of the State's power, took on all of those duties and all postings were on the town website and on the state website also. So that saved us a bundle. So, but I did have one employee retire that, so that was unforeseen expense. That was nearly $2,000 that I hadn't budgeted for last year. But because I had money in the budget, I was able to fulfill that obligation. So going forward, we have municipal election. This is additional cost from my regular operations. So, and there may be primaries, you never know, you have to be ready for it. So that this budget is built on what I believe we'll need. So we do have contract increases for employees. You'll notice that the Town Clerk again has a 2% increase. It was approved last year by both council and RTM, but it failed to have a resolution. So the Finance Department didn't put that through. So if it's your pleasure to include any sort of increase for the Town Clerk, we will need a resolution. So I have one if you need it. Any questions about what I've written in my budget?
Okay, so counselors, it sounds like the clerk is ready for to entertain questions or comments. Does anyone have questions or comments for the clerk? Counselor Aubrey and then Franco.
Yeah, I was just wondering on page 65, if I don't know, it might be here somewhere, it's got a breakdown of the regular full-time, how many people that covers and...
Yes, all employees are full-time. So you can see on the following page, that's page 66, you'll actually see one Town Clerk, one Deputy Clerk, and four Assistant Town Clerks. We eliminated the Office Assistant position because of the nature of this office, there really is no room to have someone just filing and answering the phones. We need all hands on deck. And so we cross-train both Departments of Land Records and Vital Records so that we are interchangeable in case someone is out for extended period of time, which has happened because of COVID. So we've done very well with what I was allowed to do through you at the time council approved it. So it is the right method for this office. I think if we were a bigger office, I suppose you could have a receptionist-type position, an Office Assistant, you know? Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you very much.
Counselor Aubrey, do you have other questions or should I go on?
I yield the floor.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Franco, please.
Thank you. So how does this work with the Town Clerk's salary? If we've got an increase in the past and it was passed in our budget, it was passed by the RTM, but you didn't actually receive it, and there has to be a resolution. Can we get more information on this, exactly how this works then?
So I've never had an increase, so that's why this is a new process. But the Town Charter specifies that the council sets the clerk's salary. So that's why, because I'm not a hired position, I'm an elected official. So someone has to be able to decide the salary for the clerk. Now, it had been agreed in past years, and I'm talking about 35, 40 years ago, probably 40 years ago under Sally Sawyer. There was a resolution the council adopted that authorized the Town Clerk to receive the same benefits afforded to department heads, non-salary department heads, because the clerk is a department head of that department. So that made a lot of sense to the council, and I would agree that it makes sense. Going forward, it doesn't really play into a salary increase, although I know that salaries are increased every year for department heads. But for me, it would have to come from the Town Council. And so I thought it had been handled last year because it was included in the budget and approved. But then I was told by the Finance Director that there needs to be a resolution, stating that the council agrees for the increase.
Okay, so because we didn't do an actual separate resolution, we passed the budget, but we didn't do a separate resolution saying we agreed to increase your salary?
Right, so it's a matter of...
Did that money go, that money would have went back into the general fund then?
Right, it's still in the general fund.
All right. Thank you very much.
Second times.
I'm sorry? Your counselors for first time. Counselor Bordelon, I'll make a note though, thank you. You're muted, Counselor Bordelon?
Yeah, thank you. So the last time that a raise has happened has been how long?
Never.
Yeah, so it seems like we should really, I mean, it seems like we need to make sure we have a proper establishment to at least review it, even if there's a year that we're not going to increase. It seems as if it should be put as a discussion item that we deliberate, just like the Town Manager would deliberate with department heads and they submit budgets. It would seem to me that it would be the council's responsibility to have a separate meeting with the Town Clerk prior to the budget season, maybe a week or two prior. It could be very informal and to go over this. And actually, I think it would be important to have a piece of paper where we note things that we are liking or not, like there should be a proper review. And so I'm assuming there's not that currently established, there's no way to, that's never happened?
So past, the past, I can only speak about the past Town Clerk. I wasn't around for the one prior to the past Town Clerk. And there was a review in a sense. So the real problem is, I'm an elected official. So like you are, it's the people that decide whether I stay in the job. So, but as far as the salary, that is dependent on your preference. So I, you know, I have sent memos in the past, just gentle reminders of the process, to my understanding. And it seemed as though, people seemed to be happy with putting it in the budget, but then it never actually came through for, you know, without a resolution. So having never had one, I don't know how this process was. But I do remember the past, Barbara Tarbox, I remember Harry Watson, one time, I don't remember he did it, he says he did it every year, put a referral request in to review the salary.
Yeah, yeah, no, looking at like other towns and surrounding that do have paid elected officials, including Town Counselors who actually receive stipends as well, some as low as $1,000 up to $2,000, they do put that in there if they're going to raise that or for their Town Clerk. So I don't know, I guess we can't establish a platform tonight since it's not on the agenda and it's just the budget. But I think this is definitely something that I would be willing to make a referral to the council. And I think we should really start to talk about this moving forward for the next budget seasons, how we should go about this and really have a process in place so that there definitely is the incentive and is there. Looking at the budget, so the salaries are all here for the Town Clerk, Deputy Clerk, Assistant Town Clerk, and Office Assistant too. So, I don't know, John, is this something that we would have to send to a meeting?
One sec, I'm just looking at something. It actually was a finance that had told the clerk that it couldn't go through. I think Mr. Gammu who's on here conferred with the attorney. It does take a Town Council resolution. And I do remember the clerk had emailed out to, that was the entire council, I'm not sure, but after the last budget, it was sent out to the council. No one, as far as I know, responded.
All right. Well, I think, so we would have to establish a process is my question?
You can, I mean, at a regular council meeting or at a regular COW, and then we could add it to our agenda and we could have it open for discussion. That's what I would recommend at this point.
Okay, well, I think that's important. I mean, I think we should, you know, and I think, you know, the fact that it wasn't done, you know, correctly the first, the last time is, you know, it seems to me. So if we wanted to do an increase today, we would have to have a resolution that we put forward, correct?
But you wouldn't be able to pass it today.
So that's what I'm asking.
You have to go through a typical process. And there's an evaluation that's always done first. And that's what she had emailed the council about last year.
Right, right.
There's a process in place when the council wants to take it up.
Right, so it seems that it, we should do something. I mean, there should be some process in place just moving forward. So, okay, thank you.
Any other first-time speakers before we go to second round? Counselor Aubrey, you have the floor?
Yes, I'd like to suggest that when we do the review of the Town Manager, that we also do the review for Betsy McCausia and do her salary appropriately at that time. Do I have to do any more than say that or?
Well, it needs to be done at a regular COW or council meeting. It can't be done at the special meeting. So make a note to yourself and then send an email to everybody asking for the referral. And I'm sure we can, I'm sure you would get the support for that.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Counselor Franco for your second time?
Yes, thank you. So, Mr. Bur, would you kindly forward that email to us again?
I don't know, I've been looking for it, I've been having trouble finding it. Some of the council members should have it too, but I'll keep looking.
Yeah, if you could forward that to us, I'd appreciate that. And I also think we should have a discussion about this at our next COW. And Ms. McCausia, can you please explain the operating expenses and the slight increase that this coming?
Sure, absolutely. So operating is everything outside of employees. So I have records that I have to keep with special archival paper. And that paper has been increasing much more than regular paper. And what's worse now is the binders that we purchase are down to, it's one person who makes, one company that makes it. That big company bought up the three other companies that we used to use to, you know, to kind of keep the price in line. So I was lucky enough this year with this budget to, somehow I managed to get my vendor to give me the price that I was quoted in 2019. So I really, I was so grateful. There's a difference between $100 per volume and $120. I couldn't believe the increase. That's a huge increase. That's just for a binder, the paper itself is a 20% increase. So that's the slight, that's one slight increase then. It sounds ridiculous, but our shredder, price and cost of sharing our shredder, that went up $60 for me. And then also the copier, the copiers that we're using, there's an increase there. And I'm diligently trying to, I have money set aside for new copying machines. And that would be a direct purchase instead of a lease because we seem to be losing money quite a bit through these leases. I think that that's the best, we're paying for maintenance that we don't get. It's really, it's really interesting. So that's, those are the increases that I can tell you right off the top. And then the other, the other increase is for the postage, which is, was a half, half a penny, I guess is what it was, the beginning of this year. And then it's a full two cents for next year is what I understand.
All right, well, thank you for explaining. Counselor Bordelon for your second time?
Thank you. A couple of the questions were answered that Counselor Franco had just asked. Yeah, I looked for the email as well and I didn't see it. So, yeah, I agree with Counselor Franco, if it could be sent again, not sure if Betsy has it herself.
I'm sure I do.
Okay, that would be great. And do you see, looking at this budget, under the vital statistics and things like that, how are we doing as far as making a lot of our records that can be public, public and accessible electronically? Are we kind of meeting the standard in our surrounding towns on that kind of forward process to have things a little bit more electronic, especially now during COVID times? Or are we still lacking the technology in our town?
So these are great questions because I'm all for public access to records. It's an unfortunate situation where the legislature decides what's public. So our statute sets the guidelines. And right now, any death, excuse me, birth record that's over 100 years old is public. And, but you can't, you have to understand that the Town Clerk's offices, this is statewide, have to have a way of making money. So if we were to have all those records electronically available, the over 100 years old, how, you know, we'd have to have a software that would prevent anyone being able to print it because then we lose our revenue, and that's a lot of revenue. So our land records from 1962 forward are all electronic. And we have a portal that, when I became Town Clerk, I managed to get that for free. So it's still for free for the Town Clerk, this Town Clerk. And so anyone can look for free, look at the index of their records. And you can see what records are recorded, so like a mortgage or a deed. In order to access the actual document, you have to pay a fee to the company, the vendor that we're using. And that's a $7.50 fee for 24 hours. And then there's a 320 per year. They used to have a month, but they got rid of the month. So you get a day or a year. But we manage very well. Now, death records, those are accessible to anyone except certain pieces of it. So social security, the administrative portion, so you're not allowed to see what a person did for a living or their, or their social security number. So, but anyone can access that, it's not electronic. And at this point, it's not going to be as far as electronic for the public. I have not heard anybody mention that. It's a huge expense, that would be an enormous expense. We do have all of our records microfilmed and they're kept off-site. And, but I really, we can't afford to put a database that size or the manpower to actually scan every document. Although I've made that process easier when it does come to that, because we will be coming to that. It's just, we don't have those projects right now. The last five years I've spent, I've applied for and received grant money to disassemble all of our bound books. So they were all, all the records had been loose and loose, you know, in ring binders. And then they were put into solid bindings, you know, like a regular book. And some of them are three and a half inches thick. And to open that book up and try to put it on the glass at a copying machine, it's difficult. It's difficult, not just for the time, but the waste, sometimes you get a half a picture. It's, so I determined that was one of the best things we could do for the preservation of our records is to get them out of those binders. And they're in post, they're not three-ring, they're in post binders. So you can't, you know, you can't rip it out. It's a very nice system. So I've done all of them, all death, birth, and marriage records, they're all done. Thank you. I finished that this year. So, but hey, write some legislation and get some state money out there.
Counselor Bordelon, do you have further comments?
No, just curious to see where we were. I can see where eventually it's going to come to having everything scanned, even if the public can't access it, but to preserve it in a way, if a fire or any natural disaster, it could be recalled, so that...
We have that already, we've been doing that for years. I have it all microfilmed, off-site. It's not in our vaults or it's off-site. That Iron Mountain, it's a company that houses vital records. And I can reproduce all of the records.
Perfect, thank you.
That goes with land records also.
Well, nice, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. So if someone needs research done and it's not vital statistics or, you know, birth, anything like that, or conveyance or real estate things, do they pay to have the clerks do the research? Or do they have open access to the documents that they can come in and look themselves? Like if they wanted to go through the binders, someone from the general public, can they just come in or do they have to pay Town Staff to take care of that?
No, we actually don't do any sort of title search that's left to the professionals, although we could, we just don't. I don't think that's what you were talking about.
Trying to distinguish from the categories that were here. So if you're looking through town records, you know, you wanted to do things, like when I was on the Charter Revision Commission, I came in and threw those books. But as a member of the Charter Revision Commission, I was able to go through the books and extract this information for the commission. If there was someone from the public that wanted the same kind of information, would they be paying or would they, would they pay Town Staff to do that? Or would they have access to those records?
So they have access to all the records that are allowed by law. So a genealogist has carte blanche. They can, they can ask for any book as long as they have that genealogy card. And they can actually copy down information. So, but for...
For town records, like if somebody wanted to look at the minutes from 1950?
I have that all electronic. You know, if you ask me for, you wanted June 20th, 1973, I can email it to you. It's all electronic and it's very accessible.
But does the person pay you to do that?
Yeah, just for the copies. If you were asking me to print the minutes, it would be 25 cents a copy.
So for printing, there's a charge, but if somebody needs records from town documents, they just request them and you take care of that?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else have questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, we will vote on function 100, or yes, function 1005, and the amount of $333,800. We are at eight counselors right now. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Melendez.
I'm sorry, Melendez is abstaining? Seven in favor, zero opposed, one abstention, Melendez. That passes, thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, good night.
Good night. All right, we are moving on now to Planning and Development Services account 1046. This begins on page 133 in your budget books, if everybody gave everybody a chance to get there. So the narrative starts on 133. With us this evening, well, I'm sorry, Counselor Parker?
Yes, thank you. All right, so here's my face, I'm going back off screen, thank you. $1,500?
I missed it.
I make a motion to move $1,596,94 for account number, or it's just a function number, 1046. I still move.
I can, Franco?
I'm just looking at the totals to make sure we've got, we've got the right thing. So $1,596,094 moved by Parker and seconded by Franco. And we have with us this evening, Mr. Reiner, who is the Director of Planning and Development Services. And I'll yield the floor to you and you can introduce the rest of your staff if you so choose and do a brief presentation of your budget and then we'll open it up for counselor questions. Thank you, sir.
Sure, so thank you very much, good evening, everyone. John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. With me tonight is Deb Jones, my Assistant Director, Paige Bronk, my Economic and Community Development Manager, as well as Peters Avingless, my Manager of Inspection Services, in case any specific question came up. So I know you have a number of things on the agenda tonight, so I'll try to be brief. The overall increase in our budget this year is $122,067. The majority of that increase has to do with the creation of the position of a Sustainability and Resiliency Manager. And our operating expenses are actually down significantly this year since last year. And a number, you know, we've been before you quite a bit lately on a number of different projects. I usually take a bit of time each year during our budget season to talk about all the projects that we've worked on over the course of the year through inspection services, economic and community development, as well as planning. And, you know, this year, I think we've really seen... And, you know, this year I think we've really seen a number of items starting to help grow the grand list, as well as a number of our public property redevelopment projects really move forward through the town council, through the RTM. That, those are some of the major initiatives that we've been working on, as well as doing, uh, a lot of assistance to our businesses throughout the town, helping in dealing with COVID. So, you know, uh, very quickly, a, a few of the items that we've, uh, been working on through inspection services that I think you'll see soon with the growth in the grand list, uh, so the construction of the standard building in downtown Mystic. Uh, we've all seen, uh, I think many people have been to the new Chipotle's, uh, AR builders and their apartment complex on Gunji Wamp Road is going to be wrapping up this year. There was a large project that although we don't get, uh, really tax revenue for this, uh, a, a good infrastructure project for the, uh, the town, the City of Groton Water Treatment Facility. There's also been a lot of work, uh, from our end on the middle school and elementary school projects. Uh, pretty soon we'll see the construction of Popeyes, the abandonment, uh, sorry, the abatement and demolition of the Sealy School, the villages at Bluff Point, which is a, a small apartment, uh, complex that was built, uh, very successful. The relocation and expansion of Grand Wine and Spirit. We've seen a lot of activity at Central Hall, uh, 54 West Main Street. Uh, it's going to be, uh, the bank and bridge, the oyster club addition, some work, uh, in addition at Cardinal Honda, uh, Nissan remodel, the hemp farm over, uh, at the old Paquonic Bridge Fire Station, uh, working with the Housing Authority and some additional buildings there, uh, at Paquonic Road, the Mystic Shipyard remodel, as well as the Mystic River Homes project, which we've been doing through our community development block grant. Uh, a lot of economic development work, you know, specifically our excess properties, COVID-related business responses, working with, uh, our consultant Nava Retail, doing some, uh, survey work on COVID business, uh, support and sentiment. We started our affordable housing plan, which we did get a grant for, uh, a portion of the work. Still working on the Thames River Innovation Place Project, uh, working on the RFP for the Pleasant Valley School, which hopefully soon we'll be bringing some information on that to the council. The Sealy School site, we, uh, did sell that school property. Option agreement for both Gold Star Highway property and Colonel Legyard were recently approved. The, I think I mentioned the Mystic River Home CDBG grant of 1.4 million dollars. We've been working on the development agreement and the zoning for Mystic River Bluffs, changes to the TIF policy, implementing our economic development strategy, the wayfinding project, which the council had funded in last year, CIP, we've been working to implement that. Our Economic Development Assistance Fund has helped a number of development projects in town. Our housing rehab plan through our community development block grant program has been, uh, successful this year. And, uh, again, those are just some of our economic development projects. And then, uh, last but certainly not least, through the planning division, uh, review and processing for a lot of our restaurants and businesses to help with the outdoor patios for COVID businesses, the recent, uh, open space grant that we received, that, uh, we're working on that project with the councils, processing the Sealy School application for site plan review. Uh, the Sealy School also did get their inland wetlands approval. The town, uh, staff has been working on our zoning regulation amendments for some changes. Uh, when we did those initial changes to the zoning regs a couple, few years back, we did say that there would consistently be some minor changes here and there. And those are some things that we're starting to see now. And we've reviewed and approved Chipotle's, Jersey Mike's, Popeyes, that 54 Main Street Restaurant Brewery, the Cutler Elementary School, the Standard, the Oyster Club renovations, uh, in addition at SIFT, a Posetta expansion, the Sahin Apartments. They only have their wetlands approval at this point, that New England Hemp Farm. And we've been doing some inspections for consistency, the Rogers Development, uh, a number of residential subdivisions, that Grand Wine and Spirit, also working with the council and, uh, the public on the Mystic Coastal Access Plan, participation in the City of Groton's parking plan, the, our Mystic Parking Plan project, and, uh, the, working with our Conservation Commission on the acceptance of the open space plan. So we've had a busy year and those are some of the things that we, uh, have been working on and will continue to work on for the rest of this year. And a number of those will be going into next year. So, you know, specifically on our budget for the upcoming year, uh, as I said, kind of the biggest addition is really that sustainability and resiliency position. Uh, our operating expenses are down a little over $21,000. We do have an addition of $10,000 in, uh, our economic development account for community development block grants and matching funds for grant administration. That was something that the state of Connecticut had asked us to do. We've gotten some pretty significant grants over the past years, 1.4 million dollars and a number of $800,000 grants. And we hadn't been matching any actual staff, uh, actual dollars into that. And they had said, you know, we really should put a little bit of skin in the game. So that's what that request is. And really the rest of our increases are really, uh, personnel, just salary due to step and annual contract increases. Happy to answer any questions or go into more detail on any. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure we will have comments or questions. Councilor Franco, you have the floor?
Thank you. So with all the development going on in the town, and there seems to be an awful lot and a lot in the pipeline, will your staff be able to handle all of the inspections that are going to need to be done at all of these developments throughout the construction process?
That's such a great question because that leads me into something that this year I think we're going to be okay. Next year I might be asking you for a little more help on that. And, um, I think a lot of these projects are going to take a while before they, we see a, a, a major growth in the construction portion of them. I think the Sealy School will see construction of that happen this calendar year. Some of the other projects still have to go through their planning and zoning approval processes. And I think as we see the, the workload with Sealy, that's going to help us gauge what's going to happen with some of these other projects. So it could be that next year, we may be talking to you about some additional staff. In years past, prior, many years now, prior to me working for the town, prior to the, kind of the 2008, 2009, uh, market bust, we did have a number of additional building inspectors. There were other administrative, technical staff in the office, but I think we've been doing a very good job on the staff that we have now. So this year I think we're okay with what we have and what's proposed, but, uh, come fiscal year 23, I'm really keeping an eye on our workload, working with the staff and constantly assessing where we are with things.
Thank you. And then, um, another thing that's been of topic around town has been blight. And, um, the mayor has also brought up, um, an issue with possibly a position with a blight, a blight officer. And, um, I'm asking for that, um, ordinance to come back for the council as well. And I think it's, we currently have a blight officer doing the job as a part-time position. Um, although he is a full-time employee, it's part of his, it's part of his position. And, um, I think it's, from what I'm understanding, it's pretty time consuming because you have to make numerous, um, visits back to the site and, um, and constantly follow up on it. And so do you have any insight as to what you think should be done with a blight officer in that position and for your personnel?
Yeah. So, uh, just this month, we've actually sent out six blight notifications. I just got an update today from, uh, Tom Zanarini, our code enforcement officer, uh, who serves enforcing blight, plastics, uh, staffs the zoning board of appeals, helps staff the district commission. So I think depending on how the cases that we're working through right now, uh, progress through the system, you know, we're always looking for compliance, but if there is not compliance, that's where things can start taking up a lot more time. I think we're, uh, also taking a more aggressive approach on enforcement and really starting to go out and look for a lot more cases of blight, uh, across the entire department. So maybe check back with me in a couple of months. I know we're going through the, the budget process right now, which is difficult, but I think if we hold the line of where we are now, we can probably do it with existing staff. But again, um, it, it, it seems like a lot of these things kind of come in waves of with blight and sometimes other work, uh, might slow down a little bit if our applications stay consistent or increase and we're dealing with a lot of blight. Plastic enforcement, which has been pretty minimal. That's been, um, kind of some, uh, a little bit of outreach here and there to people. And usually once people are, uh, reminded and shown what the actual, um, ordinance is, we've been doing pretty good with compliance on that.
Thank you. And for full transparency, I have spoken, uh, with Director Reiner regarding blight and the ordinance, and I have sent him some links of some, what some other communities are doing. And he is looking into that to see if it is even possible for us to do that in our state and, 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 you know, our town. And hopefully we can have a discussion regarding that in the future, depending on what you find. Um, I appreciate it and, uh, uh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilor Aubrey, you'll need to unmute, please. I heard a buzzing before and I wasn't sure where it was coming from, so I muted. You'll need to unmute. I'm sorry. There you go. Thank you.
Probably those damn new healing aids. They have a whole life for their own. Um, I just want to say that I think that, uh, we should be conceptually pleased with what we're seeing in Groton. I know we're going to see more in the time ahead. But, um, having been involved with economic development, uh, as being on the committee for many, many years and, and, uh, where we've been in the past and where we are now, uh, I can't say enough good things. I, I think that John Reiner and his staff and all the people have just done an outstanding job. When you look at the properties that were really turning around and getting on the tax rolls and, uh, exceedingly proud of the group. And I want to thank you and I stand with your budget without any opposition. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm lucky to have the support of all of you and a great team that we have.
Councilor Borlon, you have the floor?
Thank you. Um, once again, thanks for everything that you do to improve the town of Groton and your efforts with all the subdivisions as well. So I do appreciate that. Um, it just, I know blight was brought up tonight, um, and I was just looking myself online and such. And I think as we think of developing and having a much more broader blight possibly officer that's in a position that's doing this, um, maybe solely or, um, a little bit more than just what we currently have, I think it's important that we really stress and advertise more what blight is and maybe narrow down. It's one thing to have a blight ordinance, but it's important to have maybe, um, I've seen things done where like there might be just a couple, a few words or a paragraph that states what blight is to kind of target because I think some more education has to be out there. I mean, what I think is beautiful, what I think is clean and neat is not necessarily what other people think. And they might not think that what they have is blight. Um, and, you know, I'm, uh, so I, I just, I hope that we can maybe use some of that as education as well. Um, and just, you know, because it is a sensitive thing to tell someone that their yard or whatever is in disarray when they think that they're saving the environment and, uh, saving these items to be recycled. So, um, I'm excited to see about possibly, you know, uh, funding eventually having a more permanent blight officer, but I do hope that we can do some more education, um, as well with that to the community. Um, looking at here, I mean, a lot of the, um, object codes here have gone up. Obviously you said there's a lot going on. Um, I definitely would like to see, um, I think as a development, we've been seeing a lot of, um, residential scum in, which is wonderful, um, because the properties are needed. I would like to see some more mixed use space come in where, um, you see, um, different levels of income. So not just the high-end housing, but you can have high-end housing with, uh, middle and lower income kind of all in one. And then there's a different, uh, platform for different style apartments that can be in intertwined, uh, within that community. Um, I think it's really important to, um, have that, especially, um, looking at the redistricting in our town for our Board of Education. Um, low income housing seems to be on, in clusters in our town. And I think every town, every aspect of our town should have, um, affordable as well as low income and all the categories in between should be evenly dispersed throughout our community. So those are things that I'm, um, hoping to see. Um, another thing I had a question about, I mean, I know I brought it up at another council meeting. Um, I think it's a great idea, um, to look at ways where developers come in and see if they're willing to redevelop or donate back into our infrastructure, especially if they're taking TIF funds. Um, maybe once they get up and running, um, then they might say, you know what, here's a thousand to throw back in that fund to help out the next entrepreneur that comes along. Or maybe, you know what, this is a great year, here's 5,000. Um, and it would be great to have that fund grow, um, to be able to use those monies. Or, um, some towns have had it where folks, um, were able to donate into sports fields or other town greens or other needs of the town, um, by donation. So, um, I know that's not something we currently have adopted. Is that something, um, that we could start to be able to grow that fund that we recycle and reuse for other folks that come in?
I do think that's something the, the town or the council could certainly reach out and do some, uh, do some outreach on, uh, myself and my staff. I would be very hesitant to start asking businesses to start donating money towards the town because it could be seen in a negative light that we're asking people, um, to give money. I, I would feel very uncomfortable asking developers to donate money to the town. I think that there are ways we could do that. It might be something that we could do, working with the, our Economic Development Commission, but, um, just, you know, in, in the role that we have, although, uh, you know, my staff, we have to kind of, um, both be regulators as well as try and entice people to come to the community. There are certain things, you know, we have economic development incentives, we have, um, our enterprise zone, our tax increment financing, those are all very regimented, um, programs of what we're looking for. Whereas-
I was saying, maybe I said it wrong and I apologize, uh, is that it's not like you have to, but like when they're taking the TIF funds or other ways, you can say that, you know, we, you're, you know, there's an opportunity if you chose to, you know, um, and it could be, um, like I saw it in one state where a developer was coming in and part of their clause with their development, they said that these are things that we're looking to grow and our needs in our town. And some companies have said, you know what, I want to on behalf of, you know, coming in here, like our, you know, I would like to, you know, bench your town green for you because, you know, this is a great opportunity for us to be in this town. Um, so it's more of an incentive. It's not an ask. It's, uh, you know, so that's what I meant to say. And ask for money. No.
Yeah, there might be some things that we could do, working with our Economic Development Commission, the Chamber of Commerce, and maybe some of the other groups around town to start looking at some of those needs of things, you know, the Downtown Mystic Merchants Association and others, uh, that maybe identify some of those types of things.
Great. Thanks for, thanks for everything that you do, you do. Um, I think it's great to see the development come in. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Um, any other councilors wish to speak on this? Seeing no other hands, we will vote on account.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I was trying to get to the, I'd like to move a new number.
Give me one second, please. Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to move 1,217,100, 217 and 149 dollars.
Let me read it back. 1,217149?
Yes.
Moved by Parker. Is there a second?
Second, Borlon.
Seconded by Borlon. Councilor Parker, you have the floor?
Um, I'm hesitant on adding new positions at this time. We still do not know what the effects of COVID will be. And I understand we voted on a position, but I think we need to move that to a later time until we have the full picture of what's happened with COVID and make sure that we're not putting more of a tax burden on our constituents because we are raising, we will be raising taxes. And I don't think we should be doing this at that time. So that's my rationale.
Um, this is, uh, John. Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Just for note taking for our minutes, we're having a little, just want to, a little more detail, um, because that would be significant, the reduction is significant. Because that would be significant, the reduction is significantly over what that position would cost. So I'm wondering what else is in that cut or if, if there's a further information.
Is that addressed to me?
Yes, please.
I'm looking at the actual dollar amount for that person, ninety-two thousand, five hundred.
Right.
But I, uh. I think, John, that number might have been taken minusing from the Personnel Services and did not include operating budget.
Oh, yeah, the number should include the uh.
Operating budget? She needs to withdraw that.
That should be withdrawn, yes, and remade if you.
Well, if she chooses. Counselor Parker, um, do you, do you wish to have that cut or do you wish to withdraw and um, recount?
Well, I would need the, what the insurance and stuff would be or the. Give me a moment. Certainly.
I, I think, Mr. Burt, I think what you're saying is that um. The ninety-two, if, if the desire is to strip away the Climate Sustainability Manager, that amount should be subtracted from the one, five, nine, six, zero, nine.
That's right.
Does that make sense, Counselor Parker?
Sorry, yes. Let me do that one. Give me one second.
Yep. And then um, Counselor Borderline, if Counselor Parker withdraws her motion, I'll be asking you if you'd like to withdraw your second, but we have to give her a minute to decide, please.
Can I just ask a quick question while we wait?
No, we're, she's got, she's got.
I'd like to withdraw that motion and move a new, the correct number.
One minute, please. So Counselor Parker's withdrawing her um, motion. Counselor Borderline, do you withdraw your second?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Parker, go ahead.
One million, five hundred, three dollars, five hundred ninety-four, seven. One million, five hundred, three thousand, five hundred ninety-four dollars.
One, five, zero, three.
Five, nine, four.
Five, nine, four. One, five, zero, three, five, nine, four. By Parker, is there a second?
Second, Borderline.
Seconded by Borderline. And again, Counselor Parker, your rationale is. The stripping out the Climate Sustainability Manager position?
Until a la- later date, yes. Until we could, thank you.
All right. Did you wish to speak on it anymore? If not, I'm going to go to the other counselors.
Uh, I yield the floor.
Thank you. All right. So we have, I will go to Counselor Borderline first since she's seconded. Give me one second to get time. Okay, it's six fifty-seven. All right. Thank you, Counselor Borderline. You have the floor.
So um, so what are we looking at for percent raises in this, in under Personal Services besides the sustainability? John, or Bob Zagami or whoever can speak to that, uh, what percent raises are we looking at this year?
The um, majority of the union employees all have a certain raise uh, factored into the contract, I think. I would actually look to John Burt on that one. I think the union. And, uh, sorry, the non-union employees, I should say, I think with two percent and then the union employees, uh, what was the contract for this year?
I think it's two percent also, plus the union employees, many of them get the step increases.
So we have no uh, raise freezes in our town this year at all, correct?
Correct.
I'm talking, talking non-union, uh, everything else, we're, we're.
And this is a refresher for the council. We actually have a policy that says we won't treat the non-union differently than the unions. So what we do that, for them, we do for the non-union.
Right, okay. And that's a contract we have?
It's a policy.
Um, I guess I wasn't familiar with that policy, but. Can you send that policy to me at some point? Um, is that something that the council has adopted or is this something, like where did the policy come from?
From the council originally.
Right. So that policy could be updated at some point, too. It's never really brought to us. Okay. That's good. Yeah, if you could send that, that'd be great. Um, I don't know. I just think. You know, we're talking about a tight year. We're talking about increases. I mean, a lot of employers because of COVID aren't able to give raises. I mean, we're getting grants from. Different things for PPE. We don't have the funds for certain things and um. I just think it's really important. I understand the union, yes, contractual raises, we can't do much about because those are already factored in and are obligated um, per contract. Unfortunately, non-union, it's not a, a treatment of different, but it's a, it's an employment factor. Um, we've done really good in the town of Groton here. Um, we haven't had to lay anybody off. Um, and everyone has been working, let it be remotely, um, even with the library and other different municipalities. Uh, sectors in our town closing, we've been, managed to pay everybody and keep everybody employed. Um, so um. As we start to move in this budget, I think it's really important to look at those numbers of the raises because we can't say we're not going to fund. Um, outside services and other things in our community and oh, it's a tight year and, and we're going to increase taxpayer dollars. And not look at the fact that people are getting, you know, are, are, we're looking at raises and it's nothing against town staff or employees. It's the real world. Um, my job, they, they did, uh, barely did a one percent modest raise unless. People were achieving way above and beyond. Um, certain employees are choosing not to take raises in this year because of COVID and thankful to have. You know, their job um, remaining at level and being employed all the way through. Um, so I just, um, so throughout as we go, John. Everyone got a raise this year? I'm sorry?
Yes, again, there is a policy and I will send it to you.
Okay, so everyone in our town got a two percent raise this year, roughly.
Well, I definitely could each contract. It could vary a little bit. Bob might be able to reflect there, say more on that. It's right around there, if not.
Bob, do you have any information on that?
It was in, it's in the budget book somewhere. I remember reading it in one of the narratives where you, um, Finance Director had a list of all the unions.
Oh, it's in, it's on page eighty-four.
Yeah, I saw that page. Yeah. I just, I don't know. I just think it's important to look at. I mean, a lot of places um, this year are having to, um, so I just, as we move through this budget. I don't want to hear that we don't want to pay for this, we don't want to pay for that, but we didn't freeze any of the raises that we could to support um, making sure we can get through post-COVID. Um, so I think that's, um, and it's no disrespect, it's real world um, crisis. Uh, last year, we moved very quickly through the budget and I just think it's really important that. That is something that we consider as a council. Thank you.
Okay.
Can I say something, Mayor, when you get a chance?
Yes, I'll take you in between.
Right now?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Again, just to point out, we do have a policy and also I have the ability to give COLAs outside of this process. Through evaluation, I, we already gave increases to some of the outside agencies. I'd be vehemently against treating non-union employees differently just because they're non-union. They don't get the step increases others do. They lag for many years with no increases when they should have. So I'd be, like I said, very, very, very much against that and I would have to take separate action.
Okay, we have two counselors um, that uh, are first time speakers. Uh, no, actually, no, but um, well, yes, actually, because this is an amended figure. So I have to try to keep track of everything, guys. Give me a second here, please. All right. So Counselor Franco, you have the floor, please.
Thank you. From. Hearing the um, presenters that have come before us regarding this position at um. Ninety-two, what is it approximately, ninety-two thousand, five hundred dollars? From what I was being told, they're go, they're going to bring in, supposedly they're supposed to bring in a lot of grants to our town. And the position is supposed to pay for itself, basically, because they're going to bring in so many dollars into our town. Um. On top of taking care of climate change and resiliency, they're, they're going to try and bring in all this money to help do all these things and. I mean, at some points, we were told it could be like millions of dollars possibly. So. I think this position, from what I've been told, um, by people that have come and presented to us, would pay for itself like. Multifold. So. I understand it's a tough year. And. In not diminishing what people are going through with COVID and layoffs, I have to say. It seems every budget year is a tough year, every single budget year. And every single year, we're trying to keep everything as low as we can. And keep the mill rate down. And. I understand it, but we do this every single year, um, with the same, the same mentality. So. I, I don't think adding a person who's supposed to bring in all this money into our town by grants. Um. And, and removing that position would help us. So I would be in favor of keeping that position. Thank you.
Counselor Heed, you have the floor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to um, urge my fellow counselors to reject uh, the current motion on the floor. Uh, I think uh, not pursuing this position is a, it's being penny wise and pound foolish. Um, you know, we've seen what can happen with an unexpected catastrophe like the pandemic. And I think we need to be planning ahead. And, and as Counselor Franco mentioned, uh, this position is likely to bring in a lot of expertise, uh, well. Uh, she said grants, but in addition to that expertise that uh, will help our, our planning department, um, you know, move the town forward and protect us from uh. You know, future challenges and, and really frankly, we should use the word disasters. Um, you know, and, and so that's what I want to urge my fellow counselors to do, but I do also want to jump in here and just say that I think the Economic Development Department is probably one of the most. Well, it's definitely one of the most important uh, departments in, in town and I think it's really important that we fund them. At the requested amount because we do have all of these vacant school properties and other properties around town that we do need to get developed. Um, whether they come, whether they're developed at the level that we'd like them to be or not, we still need to, to have this team intact. And uh, they're doing a fantastic job and uh, John, I just want to compliment you and your staff. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a turn before we go to second time speakers. Um, I, I cannot support the first amended motion. I support the original motion that is on the floor. I am in full support of bringing on the Climate Resilience um, Sustainability Manager. Um, I look at it as an investment for our future. We really need to um, start moving forward. With um, the necessary actions to protect our town. Um, for a long time, we, we've had reports sitting on shelves. And we haven't had the bodies to be able to take action and to proactively seek out opportunities for the town. And my fear is that we may miss opportunities because as you heard um, Mr. Reiner um, state, their, their plate is quite full. Um, by trying to develop our community economically. So we need a person that's going to look out for us. Um, environmentally, um, health-wise, you know, so many different facets to this position. Um, and it's, it's well worth the investment to bring someone in to try to move us forward with these goals. Um, we just passed a resolution adopting, you know, concern for climate change in our environment as a, as a basic overarching principle. Um, to guide us going forward. Um, it's, it's, seems to make common sense to me that we would therefore have a person. To kind of oversee that, that direction. Um, and I, I do agree with the prior speakers in that. Um, there is money out there, there are grants out there and we need someone that can pursue them. And ideally, they will be able to return um, investment to the town. Um, not only just to cover their cost of their salary, but to help us move forward with these projects. Um, we have bridges that need to be rebuilt. Um, we have, you know, energy efficiencies we have to take on. Um, we have. Rising sea levels. Uh, we have a lot of issues that are going to be coming down the road and it's really important that we have someone who has the time, the energy and the expertise. No offense intended to Mr. Reiner or his staff, but this person would be uniquely qualified to deal with climate and sustainability and um. I, I definitely cannot support the first amended motion and I am fully in support of bringing in a person. Um, particularly suited and skilled and trained to handle um, the challenges ahead. With um, climate change and resilience and sustainability. Thank you. Counselor Aubrey, this is your first time speaking on this motion. You have the floor?
I apologize for the fact I had to step away, but listening, I'm assuming that there's a motion on the floor to not. Fund the new personnel, new person?
Correct. So there is a, would you like me to read the number to you?
Could you please?
Yes, there is a first amended motion um, for one million, five hundred and three thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars moved by Parker and seconded by Borderline.
Thank you. I'd just like to say that, you know, um, in, in my work, quite often, I'm working with people coming into the area. And predominantly, uh, they're interested in the waterfront. Sometimes it's a house that they're looking at right on the waterfront. And people are much more educated now. Well, I shouldn't say that, but they're very educated. And the questions they're asking are coming right back to this. What is your town doing? Do you have a plan? What do you foresee? And um, I've only been able to say, you know, we have a very dedicated group that's working towards looking at options. But I haven't been able to say we have somebody that that's their primary purpose. And I can tell you that if this does not go forward in the manner that we hope it's going to go forward. You're going to see a devaluation in properties. And so consequently, you stand a chance to lose way more than what you're putting into this. So I would tell you that this is vital. This is vital to our town. So I would stand very much in favor of the original number and uh. Thank you very much.
Are there any other first time speakers before we go to second time speakers? Okay, so I'm trying to go in order. Um, I think we'll go Counselor Parker first because she spoke um, earliest in this. Counselor Parker?
Okay. Let me start my video. My concern about this, and I've said this before when we were voting on this position. That there is already a position under Public Works, even though that person is currently working under the school building from, the twenty-twenty plan. It's still listed as a sustainability person. So before he started in that position to help build the schools. Was he or was he not doing sustainability? First question. Number two, we created a new position and put him, put this person under planning and development and please. Mr. Reiner, Mr. Bronk, everyone that's here, Ms. Jones, all of you that are working in the office, it is nothing against you. I have a concern that we're putting in a second person and what are we doing with the other position? Because it's still listed in the budget book that we're paying for this person. So we're creating a same job and if I heard correctly when we discussed this. That the, this person, new person and the old person are going to be doing similar jobs. Why are we creating two, a second position that someone's already could be doing, even though he's not doing it right now? That's ninety-two thousand, five hundred dollars that could be applied somewhere else. And have that person that is currently working where he is move back into the position that he's supposed to be in. Thank you.
Mr. Burt, you unmuted. Did you wish to speak?
Yeah, just gonna say, uh, yes, he is a sustainable, there is a difference in job description. They're not doing exactly the same. But yes, he does some sustainability. He's working on some solar things now, but probably ninety percent of the time is on. Board of Ed things, if not more on the school projects. Um, he's completely paid out his school projects and there is no funding in this. Budget in Public Works for that position to come back into the budget. Um, that position goes away once the whole projects are done.
But that does not reflect that. I'm sorry.
Well, it's not, there's no funding in there for later, but it's only the board, because that school project has to wrap up. That's where all this funding, it is reflected that he's being paid. Out of the Board of Ed money, out of the project money.
Okay, um, we are on Counselor Borderline.
I have a quick clarification.
Yes.
Can I be directed where in our budget book is the other position?
Age one twelve under the Public Works Department.
Page 112 under the Public Works Department. Third line down. Under positions.
I prefer we not use names of people. I don't know if anyone's used names yet, but let's try, let's try to just refer to it by the title of the job if we're going to go there, please. Thank you.
I, I do not believe I mentioned a name.
No, I wasn't referring to you.
I don't believe anybody mentioned a name.
Nope, and I'm just trying to caution.
Then if you look on page 116 where there's the salary reimbursement, you'll see the 101, 829. That's coming from the school project fund into this fund to reimburse. So without that, once that work is done, there is no position after that because there's no salary in there.
Can you repeat that, Mr. Burt, please?
There is no funding to replace that funding in the budget currently. So once the Board of Ed, school projects are done, once the ground 2020 projects are done, that position would go away as it sets now.
Thank you. All right, so we're going to go to Counselor Bordelon for her second time on this item. You have the floor?
Um, I second the motion. Obviously, I think it's great to have discussion. I've obviously been speaking for many years for resiliency and sustainability long before I got on the council. So I'm in support of the position. What I was asking, and I was not aware of, was this, because if you look at the percent of raises and you look at the sustainability position, it's almost like the same amount. That's why that line has gone up. It's double almost the sustainability to account for the raises. So I was just asking, I wasn't aware of the contract that we have to, you know, union, when union go up, so doesn't, you know, other staff. So I, I mean, if that's what we have in place, that's what we have to do. But I'm in full support of a sustainability person. But I do agree with Counselor Parker in the sense of it is redundant in our budget. So is it something, John, that should be renamed? Or how do we move forward with that? Because it is, you know, it'd be double marked under two different departments. That starts to get a little confusing.
Actually, I have two different titles, though. So when you look at it, it won't be the same title once it's adopted. Of course, we have not adopted that new job description. It'll have to come to the council first. But it will be two different job descriptions and titles. There'd just be some overlap. But again, very little of that, there's not much time to do that overlap at this point.
Yeah, I mean, I'm in full support of the resilience and sustainability position. I think it's way overdue. I mean, this is something that was brought up many years ago and needs to start getting moved. I'm just looking at numbers and, you know, I agree with the redundancy here. And I just have another question for John. So the contract that you're sending to us that you have, when was that contract about union and?
It's not, it's not a contract. It's actually a town policy adopted right around 2007. It's the still in effect policy.
It's called what?
Non-union, non-union terms and conditions is what Cindy thinks it's called.
Oh, you're not sure?
It's something like that. I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, and next year in the budget, or maybe when the RTM starts to deliberate, or maybe by our next budget, could you bring that document? I think it'd be good to add it in here where you show the actual reasons. It'd be good to know that that is something that is already, you know, set so that we can kind of have that. That would be a good kind of addendum, an addendum A or something. Thank you.
Good idea.
Okay. We will vote on the first amended figure of $1,503,594. If you are in favor, please raise your hand and hold your hand up until I call your name. Parker. Those opposed, please raise your hand. Aubrey. Heed. Melendez. Baumgartner. Franco. Bordelon. Granitowski. Any opposed? So that motion fails. One in favor, Parker. Seven opposed, zero abstentions. So we are back to the main motion, which was $1,596,094. Counselor Bordelon?
Yes, I had a question for the town manager. In regards to that 2017 document that you're referencing, that I'm not able to see at this time.
2007, I said.
Oh, seven, sorry. I put 17 on my paper by mistake. Does it say it has to be exactly? I mean, so.
It says it has to be equal or greater than.
Yeah, equal or greater than the.
The salary and benefits that the union employees get.
That's interesting. So if we have a rough year financially, we lock ourselves that way? I mean, because it would seem if we were having a true, we made up much better than most other towns. But had we not, and we were only able to give a 1%, let's just say, right? And union, because it was contractual, had to have a 2%. Seems a little strange to me that we'd lock ourselves into that. That's what we do every year? Every year we give exactly what the unions get?
Like I said, it had been ignored some years, so they've gone zeros some years.
So some years.
And they've gotten behind, yeah. And there's, so some people have been here for a long time and are still early in their wage range, yeah.
I can't change the past. I only can move to the future. So I can't, like for other councils that were here before me, I, I, that's very frustrating that they haven't happened, you know? But what I'm asking is just to understand. And so in other years, we haven't funded it despite having this 2007. So there's nothing saying that we couldn't fund 1% versus 2%, correct?
Well, according to that, you would. And plus, I also have the ability to give up to a 4% increase. We're going to treat everyone equal. We're not going to treat people different. We can negotiate something into the union contracts going forward. There's not many non-union employees. It's not a huge amount of money.
No, I'm just, I'm asking for formality. So it's not frustration, it's formality. That's what I was told to do here is look at the budget, right? So that's why I'm asking. And I don't have that document in front of me. I wasn't aware of that document. So until I asked, now I know about it. So I'm asking how, so in the years that this was not funded, they just ignored the contract then?
I wasn't here, so I can't really say.
So there were years that this supposed contract was in place, and the, and the raises did not happen, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Town managers, but that was up to the town, it was the town manager's decision.
Cindy just said.
To do that. She said it's the town, it was the town manager who decided that.
Correct, okay. So, all right, so this is all good information, good backstory to understand. Once again, you know, I did, was not aware of this. And so it's good to know moving forward. So in other years, this 2007 contract to, you know, has, but there is wiggle room if there was a tight budget year where the council could choose not to. And if the town manager wanted to, despite the council's wishes, could go up to 4%. Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Counselor Melendez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I just want to say that I am in support of treating non-union employees the same way we treat our union employees. Those contracts are negotiated with both sides. They're fair contracts. And there's no reason why we shouldn't, we should just treat our non-union employees differently. Just like we had earlier today with the town clerk. And there was no process or the process is difficult to discern about when there's a raise or not a raise. This is a simple, elegant solution, and it's fair. So, thank you.
Okay, we will vote for account 1046. The amount of $1,596,094.
Counselor Parker's hand is up.
I'm sorry?
Counselor Parker's hand is up.
I was placing a number on the floor. I was calling for the vote. Counselor Parker?
I did have it up as you were saying, get ready, say, I put my hand up. You said any vote, and I put my hand up, but.
Counselor Parker?
Thank you. A question for the town manager. If. Mr. Burt, are you available?
Here, yes.
Okay. All right. If non-union employees did not receive raises the same time as the union negotiated contract, how does that affect their morale? Because how would they get raises? And if they didn't, if we did not have this policy in place?
I could tell you when I first got here, that was the first thing non-union employees came to speak to me about, almost every one of them, that how unfairly they were treated in the past.
Wow.
So in other words, they wouldn't have been able to get any raises? So they would be at the same dollar amount that they would get every year?
Right.
If it's not budgeted in the budget? So their cost of living would never go up?
Right, and they don't have step increases like.
And they don't have step increases. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to try this again, but I have to look at the number over here. So I can't see you over here. All right, we're going to vote on 1046. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Parker.
Seven in favor, zero opposed, one abstention, Parker. That motion passes. At this point, thank you very much, Planning and Development Services for coming out, all your staff. We appreciate your work and your time with us this evening. I'm going to ask.
Very much.
Five minute recess at this point. Counselor Aubrey, can it wait till we come back or?
Just quickly.
Yes.
Am I on?
You are on. We're, we're still in, we haven't recessed yet. Do you want to wait or?
No, just quickly. I want to thank Counselor Parker for bringing that to our attention so that when we do go to the account where it is perhaps duplicated, we can make sure that we have an understanding of the titles.
Thank you very much. All right, we are going to recess. It is 7:26. We'll take five minutes now, please. Which is Parks and Recreation. This is on page, I'm sorry. Oh, yum. This is on page 154. Begins on 154 in your budget books. And just as a reminder. Oh, wait a minute, I think that's not the right one. Mr. Burt, the amended numbers for the golf course, not for the general Parks and Rec account, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. So no reminder needed then. So we are on to, I believe, Counselor Franco for the motion for account 1064, please. Counselor Franco, are you with us or should we go? Oh, there we go.
I'm back.
Hi. We're on page, we're on Parks and Rec 1064. And this is, the numbers are on page 156 in your book, please.
Yes, I'm with Parks and Rec number 1064 in the amount of $1,555,976. Oh, wait a minute, I got the wrong number, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I scratched that.
Second, Bordelon.
Moved by Franco and seconded by Bordelon. Thank you very much. And with us this evening, we have Mr. Berry. And Mr. Berry is the Director of Parks and Recreation. And Mr. Berry, I would like you to introduce any of your staff you'd like to introduce. So you have the floor.
Perfect, thank you. Good evening. Mark Berry, Director of Parks and Recreation. Also on the Zoom call is Jerry Locken, Manager of Recreation Services. Mary Jo Riley, who's the Senior Center Supervisor. Eric Morrison, who is the Golf Course Superintendent and Parks Manager. And Todd Goodhue, who is the Golf Pro. and Parks Manager, and Todd Goodhue, who is the Golf Pro at the golf course.
Would you wish to present anything on your budget, or just throw it open for council questions?
Oh, no, absolutely. So, the budget that we presented to the, to the Town Manager, it is a level service budget. And it was developed on the belief that recreation programs should be available to all residents, not just those that can afford to pay for them. The budget we proposed was a step towards that equity. Included in the one oh six four budget to the Town Manager were resources to introduce a mobile recreation program to bring opportunities to those that are underserved, to cover part-time staff expenses, to offer free after-school drop-in programming at the community center, and money for financial awards for those families that can't afford our programs. These expenses had previously been budgeted in the three-two-four O count, which is the Special Revenue Fund. Unfortunately, to balance the needs of the various town departments, the money to implement these programs and services were removed from the budget being presented to the council tonight. The one oh six four budget is comprised mostly of full-time staff, including programmers, office support staff, division supervisors, park staff, and a director. There are some part-time staff, including senior center building monitors, van drivers, and senior seasonal park staff. The proposed budget is four point three percent, or seventy-one thousand nine hundred and three dollars higher than twenty twenty-one. The increase reflect changes in both personnel and operating expenses. Impacts on the proposed budget resulting in changes were driven by the collective bargaining agreement, the Connecticut minimum wage impact on summer seasonal help, and the proposal to purchase a new leaf blower. The current leaf blower that we have is twenty-five years old, and replacement parts are no longer available. In fact, to keep it running last year, we had to manufacture our own part. And also overtime costs for the day of and day after cleanup of Sale Fest fireworks was the reason for the increase in overtime costs. And at this point, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Yeah, Counselor Bordelon, you have the floor?
I pass, because I have something loud brewing in the background, sorry. I, it just went off, it's a milk steamer, I apologize.
Does anyone else have a question while the steamer is brewing?
I do.
Counselor Aubrey, you have the floor.
I'm sorry, did you just say something about fireworks?
Yes, so in the past, we've had a sponsor cover the costs associated with the, with the fireworks as part of Sale Fest. And at the time we were developing this budget, we weren't sure that we were going to, that sponsor was gonna be able to continue that relationship. And so, we put money into the, we put money into, additional money into the overtime budget, just to make sure that we would be able to have the staff to do day of and day after cleanup of the, of the fireworks at the Sale Fest.
Okay. I think you can probably plan on putting that someplace else, because they canceled Sale Fest.
Yeah, I actually did hear that, I think, two days ago. Yeah, but at the time this budget was being put together, you know, I don't think that decision had been made.
No, I, I agree, you have to plan on things, but I just thought I'd mention that.
Sure.
Thank you. I yield the floor.
Counselor Bordelon, are you ready to have a floor?
Nothing's brewing in the background. Thank you. I can really appreciate having affordable recreation for folks in our town, to make it affordable, since it is a town service. I think it's really important, and even more of important, staff coming off of COVID. I like the drop-in idea. Kids and adolescents need places to go that are safe and have something to do. And a little bit of oversight, and so I think this is really, I like, you know, that presentation that that's gonna provide. Looking at this Paquonic Plains Park, is there any of the funding in this budget gonna help with any of the there for the track? I know it's been used very heavily during COVID. And I know I caught up at one meeting, talking about, you know, the water, the standing water down there, maybe some planters. Has any more information come out about that, as well as looking to get any numbers for some maybe low-lying solar lights to maybe light up just the walking path, so that people can have, you know, an ability to exercise outdoors after hours that are safe, you know, in a contained area. There's a need now, post-COVID, where, you know, most people don't wanna be, not post, during COVID, that they really don't wanna be in a gym, even with vaccinations. And outside walking, not everyone has someone to go with, and after hours, it'd be really great to have a place to utilize. So, my question's basically, is any of the maintenance costs gonna be going into that particular park? I also have seen the playground needs some repair. Sometimes it's taped off over there. Some of the stuff is getting ripped up. That park was very beautiful at its beginning, and it's starting to show it's where it needs a little bit of maintenance, so just curious about that particular park. Thank you.
Sure. And if I can just jump back to something that you said at the beginning about the, about the equity and those that can't afford it. And perhaps I didn't make this clear, what we had put in the budget was cut. So, we're not gonna be able to do the after-school programming, because that was cut. We're not gonna be able to do the mobile recreation, because that was cut.
What was that cost that was cut? How much?
Sure. I think the mobile recreation, we had, we had budgeted
Trouble hearing John.
I think he was gonna throw a number in there. Mr. Burt, do you have the number?
Cindy says it wasn't really cut, it's actually in the three, she believes it's in the three twenty-four budget. She's checking.
Yeah, no, it is in the three twenty-four budget, but because that's revenue-driven. We're not in a situation where we're gonna be able to run programs that aren't generating revenue. So, this, you know, we're gonna have to focus on the pay-to-play programs first. Hope that we generate enough revenue to cover the expenses for those programs that we were proposing that aren't gonna generate revenue.
Okay, so you requested the one three-five-three-five-two, and then it went down to one-seven-three-one-two-seven-five?
That's correct. And I, you know, I fully appreciate, and I don't want the Town Manager feel like I'm throwing him under the bus. I mean, he's got difficult decisions. Yeah, he's got difficult decisions to make, and, you know, at this time, it just didn't work into the budget. It's something that we were committed to and are hopeful that we can do it. But with the, the impact that COVID had on our three-two-four budget is not going to allow us to do some of these. I don't wanna call them extras, but, you know, some of these other essential things that that we're committed to doing.
Right, so, so, my other point about the park there and the surfacing, is that something that's gonna be repaired?
Yeah, sorry, I was gonna get to that. I just wanted to clear, clear up that first. So, yes, there is money in the budget. Not for lights, I have not priced those yet. When we put this budget together, you know, three months ago, this discussion hadn't taken place. I think it's an excellent idea, and I don't know why it wasn't ever thought of earlier. I have looked into it. There are lights, solar-powered ballards out in front of Branford House. I have not been over there to see them yet, to see if, you know, how much light they put out, and you know, how far they'd have to be spaced out. I need to get over there and do that. And as far as the track, what we're planning on doing is, starting in the fall, is we're gonna start to widen the track. The challenge we have right now is the track is, the walking path is narrower than any piece of equipment that we have that we can regularly maintain on there, so if we widen it by, I think, a foot on either side, we then have equipment, existing equipment, not, we wouldn't have to purchase new equipment. We have existing equipment that will allow us to, on a regular basis, grade that, keep it level, so we don't get these, you know, potholes and places that fill in. So, yes, we'll be able to, there's maintenance money in the budget to make the repairs to the track. There is not money in the budget for lighting. I don't know what that cost is at this time. But there may be opportunities to get grants or do some kind of fundraising, but it's an excellent idea.
Good, thanks. I was just gonna say, because I think, you know, with COVID, the need to exercise is, you know, and there might be some grants out there possibly for that. If you had to continue with that service that was, on this number that was cut for, what could get it partially running? If you couldn't fund it all, what would get you partially there?
Well, I think the, of the three that I mentioned, I think what would have the greatest impact right away would be the part-time expenses for the, for the free after-school drop-in program. So, that's essentially having a person there that can supervise, you know, what's going on within the building immediately after school. And we had started working with the library pre-COVID, because they've, they've had a challenge for a while, where a lot of students were going to the library after school, just to hang out. And they're, they didn't have the resources to deal with all the kids and some of the issues that were, that were coming up. So, we partnered with them, some of their staff was coming over and helping us run the after-school program in the gym, and, you know, just as we were getting that kicked off, COVID happened, and we've been shut down, you know, for the last fourteen months. The other part that we were working on, and this is with the Board of Ed, is Ernie Koschmier had written, I think, I believe it was a grant, or got funding from the state to offer food to students, I think it was from ages six to eighteen, after school. And, and the community center was, was going to be a site that we were gonna be able to do that. So, we were kind of pulling all three things together, but unfortunately, like I said, because of COVID, we, we've had to shut all of that down, so.
What number would that be?
Sorry, I think we had budgeted seventy-eight hundred dollars.
Seventy-eight hundred? And then my last, so John, is this something, if it wasn't funded tonight, and I decided to move a number, that we could look at under other funds later as different revenues come in, because this drop-in program would be really needed for students, you know, that don't have anywhere to go, and parents are working. Is there other ways that we could fund that under any other things that we've gotten?
Yeah, one question mark, you said seventy-eight hundred, right? How much is the overtime that you'll be saving on the Sale Fest?
Well, I, let's see, our overtime request went from ten-eight last year to fourteen-three, so that's thirty-five hundred dollars.
We're almost there.
We're halfway there, yeah.
Alright, so if I moved a number that was the difference of that thirty-five, but up to that seventy?
So, Counselor Bordelon, if we could let her jump in, and I'm speaking, come back to you, please. Go ahead, Director.
Good evening, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, I just wanna clarify the way the budget was presented, and what the fifty-two thousand that Director Berry is referring to. We have the one oh six four, which is a Parks and Rec fund, and you also have the fund three-two-four, which is gonna be voted on a little bit later. And what the one oh six four, that fifty-two thousands, was technically a contribution from the general fund to the Special Revenue Parks and Rec Activity Fund three-two-four to cover the cost of those programs. So, and that was for scholarships, mobile rec, and drop-in. Now, those costs are still included in the three-two-four fund. They were not cut out of that fund. What was cut was a contribution from the general fund into three-two-four to cover those. So, if those funds remain in three-two-four, those programs and the funding is in there to run those programs. So, when we talk about adding it back to one oh six four, you're not adding it to a program that's going to be in one oh six four. What they're asking for is the general fund to contribute to another fund. Remember, we just recently did contributions to other funds? So, that's, that's what was cut. It was decided that we weren't gonna transfer funding from the general fund into this fund. If those programs were gonna run, then the revenue from those programs would be in the fund to offset the cost. Does that make sense?
I think. Using to me, but it's, I appreciate your help with it. It's, I'm still a little confused, though.
Can, can I, may I interrupt for one second, because I think, so, Director Landry, correct me if I'm wrong, what you're saying is that we should not be increasing this particular account, one zero six four, to cover the programs that Mr. Berry was speaking of, and that Counselor Bordelon is interested in. We instead should have put the money into contributions to other funds?
Technically, that's what was requested, but instead of putting it in contributions to other funds, it was budgeted in the one oh six four. And during the discussions at the manager level, it was decided that it should not have been handled that way. And that's why it's not shown as a manager cut, it was removed from the request column.
Okay, so if Counselor Bordelon, and I don't know this is what you're going to do, Counselor Bordelon, and perhaps I'm jumping the gun here, but if she wanted to move another number with the intention of having that particular program be funded, where would be the appropriate place for her to do so? Could she do another number here, or would she need to make another number in another account? Or is that not even, are you not even considering that, Counselor Bordelon?
I, I guess what I was asking, so, I guess Mark was saying seventy-eight hundred would, so, so do we or don't we have the funds to support a physical body down at the community rec center to be a chaperone supervisor?
So, right now, the funds are, they were put back into three-two-four O, which is a revenue-generated fund. In other words, we don't typically offer programs and run programs unless they generate revenue. So, the three programs that I was proposing, none of those are gonna generate revenue. We're not gonna charge for a free after-school program. I mean, that just, you know, the whole idea is to bring in those residents that aren't able to afford all of our programs. And so, we wanted to offer this free program. So, yeah, we can, we can run this program, but it's not gonna generate revenue, and it's gonna further impact what's already happened to our, our Special Revenue Fund because of COVID.
So, I guess.
Clear?
Yeah, I think, so, Mayor Grentowski, so, or whoever could answer then, where does this number have to go? So, if thirty-five hundred is already possibly gonna be a positive revenue from fireworks overtime, and we're down forty-three hundred, where do I gotta put that forty-three hundred to get the program operational?
So, Mr. Berry and Director Landry, if Counselor Bordelon moved a new number for one zero six four, increasing it by the amount that Mr. Berry says would be necessary to staff that part-time person for the after-school drop-in program, would there, would that program then be possible, given the amount of money that's in one zero six four? Or are there gonna be other costs incurred that will not be covered by simply increasing this by, what, forty-five hundred dollars? Either, either Mr. Berry or Director Landry, whatever, whoever thinks they can answer that for us, please.
I, I don't not believe there would be any additional costs associated with running that. The seventy-eight hundred that we had budgeted was for a part-time person to be there after school. We have supplies enough within our department now that we wouldn't require any additional any additional equipment or anything like that.
Right, Counselor Bordelon, you have a few seconds left on your time, so.
I don't have an answer where I should put this, so I'm looking for clarification still. Where should I?
I took Mr. Berry's answer to mean in this account, correct? If we increase this account by, what, forty-five hundred? Is that what you said?
I was getting forty-three hundred if that forty-five hundred was. Um, I was getting 4,300 if that 4,500 was positive revenue from the fireworks.
I want to make sure Mr. Burton, Ms. Landry are also listening so that we don't have to come back and redo this. So, so, did you hear the intention, what I think is coming next? And I could be wrong again. The intention, I believe, is to increase 1064 by approximately $4,300, with the goal being that Mr. Barry could then fund the part-time expense for the after-school drop-in program.
Okay, so technically, if you're going to increase 1064, you're moving that program out of 324 and into the General Fund. It would be a General Fund-funded program from now on.
And I don't know the implications of that. That's a.
Well, it's just that when you, we don't typically budget in, we have contributions to other funds, and that's where we would normally budget if we felt there was a fund that, such as the fleet or the computer replacement or REVAL, that needed ongoing contributions, or the capital reserve fund. What this is doing is you're basically subsidizing another fund.
Okay.
And so my thought is, if you're going to put the money in 1064, then you just run the expenses through 1064 rather than putting the money in Parks and Rec and then having, transferring that money as a revenue source over to 324.
So, so, um, as I understand it, the program was not going to be funded any, I mean, it's free drop-in, correct? So you were not going to be taking money in to cover the drop-in program after school. So therefore, if we just pay for a staff person out of 1064, does that create the havoc that Director Landry is talking about? Or are we good because it's not, it's not intended to be revenue generating? Do you, do you?
Yes, uh, you're directing that question to me?
To, to both of you, actually, because I don't want to cause more problems for the Finance Director, but I do understand what Counselor Bordelon is trying to do.
Yes, no, this is not intended to be a revenue-generating program.
Okay. So then, Counselor Bordelon, you have the floor, if you'd like.
So would this, Cindy, would this be the account that I would raise then by 4,300, or do you recommend I do it somewhere else?
No, if the intent is for this program, which is not going to generate any revenue, you want the cost to be funded by taxpayer dollars, then you would increase the money and fund 1064. You're going to add dollars to that, to what I'm, I'm hearing is cover a part-time position to be located at the middle, at the community center for potential drop-ins after school. Is that what your intent is?
I, Mark, I'll, Mr. Barry, to double clarify, to make sure I'm understanding everything correctly.
Yes, that is correct. It's for a part-time position at the community center to have somebody supervise a drop-in, free drop-in program.
So Counselor Bordelon, did you wish to, we have other counselors that wish to speak, so would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I will. I just want to make sure I have my numbers, unless you want to come, if you want, just let them speak and then I will put my, try and my number right, and then I'll, I'll drop it. Thank you.
Counselor Heed, you have the floor.
Thank you. Okay, so, Mr. Barry, when I'm looking at the, the accounts, 10, 10642 Programs and Events, the actual 2020 number is 279,565. The adjusted is 289,946. The estimate, you know, to, for 2021, 287. You know, that's the line I'm looking at. It goes up to 375,663 this year. You know, the, the total budget looks like from 2020 to 21 to 22's request goes up about 5% per year. But this number, I don't know, it looks like maybe things got shifted around or something.
Yes, that's, that's exactly what happened. So if you look at 10640, you can see that it decreased from the adjusted of FYE 21, which is 251,520, down to 182,551. So what, what we did is, the Community Outreach Coordinator had previously been under the Leadership Cost Center, and we felt that it was more appropriate to have that position under Programs and Events as they're more closely related. So we just simply took that position out of 10640 Leadership and moved it into 10642 Programs and Events.
All right. Okay, and I'm, great, perfect. So overall, we're going up to 1.7 million for 31,275. So I'd like to, you know, just keeping in light that we're looking to reduce some expenses to taxpayers. Just want to throw a motion on the floor, 1,700,000 even. That's a 31,275 cut, just with the idea that if we can stimp a little bit this year, maybe we can get into next year.
Can you repeat the number, please?
Sure, 1,700,000.
Is there a second before you give rationale?
Right.
Second.
Moved by Heed, seconded by Franco. The first amended number for account 1064 has moved by Heed is 1,700,000. Counselor Heed, would you like to provide your rationale?
Sure, it's just a small cut of 31,275 with the idea that we should be going through some of these accounts and, and just looking if we can squeeze out a little bit of savings so that we're not increasing taxes on the residents this year as much as possible, so.
Do you yield the floor? Yeah, okay, thank you. All right, we are on to Counselor Melendez next, please. You have the floor, sir?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you hear me? Okay, thank you. So I know that the DEI Committee has a small budget just for the manager, Bert. Is that rolled into the Parks and Rec account, or is that a different account?
It's in HR.
It's in HR? Okay, thank you. Then my question is not relevant.
Just to point one thing out on the motion, so that would have to, 31,275 would have to come out entirely out of the 175,299 for operating expenses, which is about 18% cut. Mark, could you tell us if you had to cut out 31,275, well, other than there could be that few thousand out of the overtime? But, Mark, what would you do to try to close that gap?
Oh, boy. Cancel the Fourth of July parade. Cut some consulting services. Yeah, I mean, there's, if you look at this budget, there's, there's not a whole lot for operating expenses. Most of it is under personnel. So I'm just looking through the list. A lot of these are tied to personnel. Yeah, I guess we could, we could cut seasonal staff, which would, you know, we could reduce or eliminate maintenance of some parks, reduce hours for van transportation. You know, these are all part-time positions. Yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, those would be a couple of cuts that, that, that we could look at.
Mark, I think these type of cuts have been done in the past and services have been cut. And I think it's been quite a bit of outreach from the public and not being satisfied with the level of maintaining parks when this happened. Has that been your experience?
Yeah, you know, before I got here, there were, I think, double the number of employees in parks that we have now. And I think I've given this, you know, description before. You know, it used to be we were proactive. We would actually go out and prune trees. Now, a tree dies, we just take it out, and a lot of times, we don't even bother replacing it anymore. Or, you know, a shrub in front of a building dies, we pull it out, we fill the hole in, and that's, that's the level of care and maintenance that we're able to provide right now with the level of staff that we have. And, you know, we're, we're regularly putting out fires from the public to, you know, this needs to be fixed and that needs to be fixed. And, and, you know, some of our, our playground equipment was installed in, in 1994. And, you know, it's, it's old and it's rundown and it breaks down, and it's just more for us to have to do. And Counselor Bordelon mentioned, you know, Pocahontas Plains Park and, and, yeah, I mean, trying to keep up with this all with the staff that we have is just, you know, it's next to impossible.
Thank you. We do have other counselors that wish to speak, but Counselor Heed, have you yielded the floor? Yes, because we went to Counselor Melendez. So I have next on the list, Counselor Franco.
Excuse me, I don't know if you noticed, and I don't know if it's appropriate, but Jerry Locken wanted to put up his hand, wanted to speak.
No, I do not see a hand.
Jerry, put up your hand again.
See, Mr. Locken, did you wish to speak?
If it's appropriate, Madam Mayor, I was just, to add on to the response regarding what, what we might cut, the 31,275 that we might cut. Just as an indication of, of where the department stands, the funding for an after-school program, you know, part-time staffing was cut. So we're already at that level, you know, so when you ask, what else are we going to cut? I mean, it's, there, that's the best cut that we had to make. So anything beyond that is, is actually worse. So when we're talking about equity and, 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 and hard times in COVID and who needs services and who needs, you know, help from town government right now, it's, that's exactly who needs it. So we're, we're, we're not, you know, it's, 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 there's a disconnect for me when we're talking about cutting tax-funded things that people need. And, you know, so the, the people that need it are the ones that we're talking about cutting it. So, you know, the, the, I just don't, I just, I'm, I'm, I apologize for my, I'm a little passionate about this. So that's just, I, I guess I just wanted to add that, just to make sure it was clear that there are no good cuts. Everything in 1064 is tax-funded, and the best cut that we had was taking out mobile recreation, after-school programming, and financial assistance. Those are the best things that we had to take out. Anything, anything that's left in 1064 is worse.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Locken. So Counselor Franco, we'll go back to, to you, please. You have the floor.
Thank you. I would like to ask Mr. Bert this question about account 3240. I'm not exactly understanding this. Are the programs Mr. Barry is discussing, are they in 3240 funded there?
Well, it's.
Completely cut?
Well, it's shown there, however, there's really, fund, you know, you, you, if you have a great fund balance, you could fund that. Their fund balance has been decimated over the last year. It continues to go down. I believe they're even in the red now. So until you get programs going and get, they can be funded out of there, but only if those revenues start coming in again enough to do that.
So that was my.
It's shown in there, but it's probably not going to be able to for some time.
So, and, because I'm noticing their revenue due to COVID is projected to be down from what they predicted, about $858,000, basically. So if their revenue did go up, they would be able to fund this, is what you're saying, through that.
If they phone up enough, yes.
That's where they would fund it, because their revenue is coming in through paid programming. They'd be able to pay for a program that is free in that account.
Right.
That's, okay.
I was just thinking, yeah.
I was a little confused by the whole thing. So I would like to know from Mr. Barry, what is your projections with the COVID? Are you seeing an increase? Because in people wanting to come back and in-person doing things?
Yes, so we just recently posted information about our, our spring and summer programs, and the phone has rung more in the last two or three days than I think it has in the last year. So we are encouraged. But, you know, there's one thing that, you know, as the staff, we keep talking about, well, you know, we can offer all these programs, but until people feel comfortable, you know, taking these classes, all the programs that we offer isn't really going to matter. We're looking to offer, you know, both in-person and virtual programs for the spring. And, you know, hopefully, if things continue to get better, we can transition away from the virtual programs and get back to running full programs. You know, in all, in all honesty, I think it's probably going to be fall, this fall, before we see, before we return back to the level of programming that, that we did, you know, prior to COVID. You know, I, I suspect that there's still going to be some hesitation, you know, this summer, running our program, our, our programs. And summertime for us, that's when we typically do most of our programs, and our special revenue fund generates a lot of money, because we're doing, you know, day camps and specialty camps, and we've just got a lot going on. I'm just, I'm not fully confident that that, we're going to be at that point this summer. I, I think it's going to be this fall, when we get back into a regular kind of program level that we've accustomed to in the past.
I see. And then, um, so there's, like, I see some things have gone up and some have gone down, like, your leadership support has gone down by about 60,000 from FYE 2020. And then, but then, like, park maintenance has gone up. So that's sort of a wash. And then you're expecting programs and events to increase from 2020 to 2022 by almost $100,000. So can you talk on that and what, what you're seeing, what you think maybe?
We're still on 1064?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
My 56.
I think that was Counselor Heed's question earlier, wasn't it?
Yeah, I was gonna, yeah, and perhaps I didn't explain it clearly enough, so.
My thought is, like, are we, like, when you're saying programs and events, and, and you're worried about maybe, like, the summer, people aren't going to feel comfortable doing things, will we have a Fourth of July parade? I don't know. I mean, do you have an idea on that? I mean, you made the call last year, didn't you, on whether we were going to have it?
No, that decision was, I don't believe that, that, we made that decision. I think we were told we weren't going to have a Fourth of July parade, and we actually, Jerry pulled off a virtual parade.
Right.
People submitted videos, and we streamed that. Right now, I believe we are planning for a Fourth of July parade, not virtual, but in-person. You know, that, that could change.
Now, it's hard, because we're planning for what's going to happen this summer, and we don't know what happened with the vaccines and how people are going to feel comfortable, and should we have all these people lining the streets?
Right, and that's, and that's a struggle that, that the staff has, has had to deal with over the last year is, you know, we, we, we make plans for programs based on current conditions, and then the conditions change, and we can't offer the programs, or we have to do them in a different way. The numbers that you're looking at in 1064, all of these numbers, most of these are tied to salaries. So whether we run, whether the Fourth of July parade takes place, that really isn't going to impact, it will have a small impact on program and events, but not a significant impact. Like I said, you know, in the introduction, most of 1064, it is full-time. Like I said, you know, in the introduction, most of 1064, it is full-time salaries and there are some part-time salaries. So I, I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Well, it does. To a sense, it does. I, I understand. I just think it's, um, I was, prior to COVID, I was very happy with the stream that was going on with Parks and Rec and, you know, the, the direction everything was going. And I thought it was like, it was just blossoming and to something even better than it already was. I mean, I thought it was great to begin with, but I thought it was even blossoming even more. And then I think COVID just put quite a chink in the whole plan. And
It has. And it's going to take us, you know, when we get to 3240, I'm not expecting that we're going to be out of the woods, you know, within the next year. It's probably going to take us a few years before we get back to, you know, where we're generating more revenues than our expenses.
Right.
Yeah.
We had noticed that even though we had, I had noticed, I can't speak for anybody else, that we would, even though we increased your budget, your revenues seem to have gone up drastically just because we increased your budget a bit. You know, like, you'll say and spend, spend some money to make some money. I mean, it just
Right.
See, the impact of where we would spend the money and how it was coming back in return.
Yeah.
Just COVID, just, oh.
It did.
So your, your time is up. Thank you. Councillor Obray, you have your hand up?
I do. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. So then councillor, I'm, I'm, I wish to speak, but I'm going to let councillor Bordelain go first to see if you're ready to do what you were wanting to do. Mr. Burt, go ahead.
Just to say, if you are thinking you want to put general fund dollars towards any programs, you should do it here rather than trying to move it into the 324. So if there's going to be general fund dollars involved, just program it in this budget.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Bordelain, do you wish to speak?
Yep.
So a couple of questions. So under the, the 10640, the, the leadership account, that 182,551, what is that funding?
That funds my salary and a portion of the recreation managers, supervisors, managers of recreation services budget. So it's, I believe, my full budget and I don't have all the finance, all the personnel information, but I think it's half of, half of the manager of recreation services budget.
Okay. And then under community events, that 13,970, is that like parade and that type of stuff?
Yes.
Because I'm, I guess what I'm envisioning is maybe the COVID direction may change and you don't want to decrease funding. I, I envision more outdoor activities, more concerts in the parks. So we do it at the beach. Well, we can do it at Parkland Park. We could do a movie in the park down there. There's so many other things that people need to get out that, you know, with COVID going on, you can still, it's so much better to be outside and you can social distance, you know, a ways away. So I, I mean, the other part here, I have one other question, the mowing for Board of Ed, that's $63,771. That comes out of your fund too?
No, that's actually, under the financing plan, that's actually revenue.
That's revenue coming in.
Yes. Yeah. So the Board of Ed pays us 63,000, or proposed to pay us 63,771. And that's for us to mow the athletic fields, line the fields during the off-season, off-season of high school sports. So when youth sports are using the high school fields, we also take care of the fertilizing up at the high school. So they, they pay us to do that work.
And how much did you budget for, for scholarships?
I think annually, we give about $40,000 out in scholarships.
Forty thousand?
Yes. And that, you know, we ask every, we have kind of a graduated program where depending on a family's, I think adjusted gross income, they pay either, you know, 30% of the program or 20% or, or, I, I don't remember. Jerry, I'm sure, if she's still on, could tell you exactly the, the breakdown of the three. I think there's three different kind of levels of funding.
All right. Um, all right. I, I'd like to move another number if possible.
This will be the, this will be the second amended number then. So go ahead.
Um, let me just make sure I have my numbers. 1,775,575.
One more time, please. Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
So that was, um, just one minute, please. A second amended number for 1064 in the amount of $1,775,575 by Bordelain, seconded by Parker.
Um, I, I think this would be the 43, 4300 to offset the cost of that other 35 to fund the part-time chaperone at the community center. Because I think it's really important as we move forward, youth need places to go. People are working and, you know, with COVID, they just, they're losing all their programs and they need things that they can do. And, and that program could even have an outdoor component in the warmer weather, drop in soccer, drop in outside basketball, the sky's the limits. I also put in there the 40,000 to also afford the scholarships because right now, the people who are going to, who need the programs the most are the ones who are not going to be able to have them. And families need support in our community and they need programs. And I think that that just needs to happen. With the decrease, people are laid off, unemployed, lost jobs, and they have a lot of children that are home for the summer and they're not able to access programs and they need programs. I, I'm hoping maybe you guys can also apply for some scholarships. There's a lot going on through COVID relief. Hopefully the town's bringing in some money or something, maybe other funds later can offset. But I think this speaks volumes. As we give raises in our town, which I'm, I'm all for raises, we also have to consider the taxpayer on their dollar that you're raising, what services are you giving? And it's important that we fund the services that people are going to use at all levels. So all affordability. So that 40,000 says, the person who only made 20,000 this year, their daughter can play soccer. The, the person who made 50,000 but has four kids can put them all in basketball this year. And it also is so important, if we're going to have a community center, that we invested all of this money in, the roof, the water, all of that, to have it just sit there and not have the after-school program, which is a huge component. And hopefully the, the meals can start to come into there. I just really think that that's the center of our town and we should utilize it. That's why I would, I think this number is a good number. And I really think we should support the Parks and Rec because our children are screaming for attention and support and community outreach and programs. And if we don't fund these programs, it's going to affect the high school later. Because these are the programs that feed into our high school and make us competitive in our town. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to take a turn to speak here right now, as soon as I get my timer set. Okay. I can support the second amended figure, which was moved by councillor Bordelain and seconded by Parker. I cannot support the first amended figure, which was the $30,000 cut to the department. I concur with the prior speaker as far as now being a time when we need to be investing some money to help our community. I concur with what Mr. Locken said earlier. These, this is the very reason why we need these programs is because of the situation we're in. I was fortunate enough prior to COVID to, to be at the community center a couple of times and to see the after school programs going. And Officer McClellan was there. We had, we had other staff members there and there were just little kids and they were just joyful and they were all over the place and they had pizza for the kids and it was very nice. And, you know, just to have that building available, in particular in that centralized location that is very accessible for many children in our community to be able to get to, I think it's very important. And this, this is, you know, government provides services. And I understand this is a tough year for people, but these are the people we're trying to serve. You know, the, these are programs that are not going to cost families money. So it is something that we can do while, you know, the burden of this small amount of money can be spread across the whole town to help our most vulnerable, the children in our community that maybe have nowhere else to go. Something that can give them a sense of normalcy again, to get back to a fun program where they can grow and, you know, be enlightened and grow physically as well as, you know, emotional, social, emotional as well. So I can, I can very much support councillor Bordelain's figure. And I would not support a cut to the program. Thank you. Councillor Obray, I had your name written down, but I don't, I don't see your hand. So did you, did you want a turn or no? No?
I'm fine.
Okay. So then this will be councillor, councillor Baumgartner has not spoken yet. We'll go to councillor Baumgartner and then I have councillor Franco back on the list. So it is 8:25. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I too agree with you. I, I think that was very, very eloquently stated. I support the second, the second amendment amended motion and strongly oppose the first amended motion. As both you, Mayor Granitowsky and councillor Bordelain stated, it's so critically important that we continue providing investments to our recreational program, programming, especially at a time when their budget has hemorrhaged as a result of, other revenue sources, I should say, have hemorrhaged as a result of the pandemic. I can't think of many other town departments that are so heavily reliant on the revenues they generate to actually fund their operating expenses. And, you know, the Recreation Department has done that for, for several years now. And I think at a time again when they cannot generate these revenues, it should not, they should not be penalized as a result of that. So I would, while also supporting this amended motion, I, I would hope that the town moving forward, especially as we're looking to identify ways to, to invest in our, in our town government through the American Rescue Plan funds that we consider allocating a significant amount of those dollars towards a park and recreation programming throughout Olive Garden. And so I think this is just a, a, a small step forward in, in providing, again, additional investments. But I think in the long run, we really do need to consider making some significant programmatic investments in the future. Our kids, again, have been hit the hardest by this pandemic. And, you know, again, really appreciate the comments made tonight in the discussion on this. No long overdue. And thank you again to Mr. Barry and Mr. Locken for your leadership at this time.
Councillor Franco, you have the floor?
Thank you. So I'd like to clarify, the $40,000 in scholarships has been cut and it's been cut out of this account?
Well, I think this goes back to what Cindy was saying. This, when we originally presented this to the, to the town manager and the budget review team, it was bundled in a contribution account that would have taken money from 1064 and made a contribution back to 3240. And Cindy said that, not Cindy, the decision was made that that wasn't the appropriate way to do that accounting.
So you are giving, your plan is to give no scholarships this coming year?
No, what we would do is we would take that money out of, it would just decrease whatever revenue we'd make out of 3240. So if normally we would, you know, have generated some money for that program and we were paying, making a financial award to a family that couldn't afford it, instead of, you know, and I'm just making up, instead of $80 for a program going into 3240, because we, we've offered a financial award, we've lowered the price of the program, only say $40 would go into the revenue, the 3240. So essentially, we would just be not putting as much money into 3240 as we normally would have. So it would, it would decrease our, the revenue that we're, that we're generating.
Miss, um, so I have to clarify the question now. So I don't think, just to kind of get my time as the rest I'm clarifying, because I don't know, I don't get it. So 3240, you're going to bring in revenue. You had planned to give scholarships over in 3240 over on that, that account?
Yes.
So if you brought in, let's just say, you had a bunch of kids, they had a program going and you brought in $200 in that, like,
Yeah.
You know, a dance class or something, just say $200 in fees.
Right.
And you allowed some son children to come in and not pay.
Well, everybody, everybody pays something.
All right.
Yeah. So, right. If there, if we awarded some financial awards to, say, two families for a total of $40. So instead of putting in $200 into the general fund, only 100 and, how much did I say? Sorry. How much did I say was going to the family?
40.
40, thank you. So only 160 would go into, go into the, be credited towards 3240.
And then
Can I just say something that may help everybody? Special revenue funds is meant to, people are going to pay money in and out of the money paid in, you put programs out. The pro, the scholarships and the drop-in program were not going to be paid for by anybody. It was going to be borne by the taxpayers. So that's why they said it was okay to put it here. And I'll shut up now.
But it's not usually here. It's usually paid for in 3240.
That's correct.
If we've made the decision that we're just going to pay for it and give these, give these so kids can use the programs, then it doesn't need to be in 3240.
Right. Because usually 3240 usually pays for the kids to be in the program.
Right.
So when the $200 comes in, you're saying 40, so $40 is a scholarship. Where does the $40 go then?
It, it just never shows up. We don't charge that. If we offer a financial award, instead of charging 10 kids $20, we, you know, eight kids pay the $20. No, that's, so
So my thought is like
All 10, all 10 kids would pay something.
Listen, I don't think you're understanding my question now. If you have a class and you bring in $200 worth of revenue for paying customers, and then you have two extra kids who need the scholarship, they just join the class. You're still collecting the $200.
Yeah. But you still need to be able to pay the staff members. So if you have, if you don't have enough paying kids and you still want to offer the
I fully understand that. I, I really do understand that part. I, I do.
Okay.
That's what I'm asking. So in 3240, that's where you've always paid it?
Right.
It doesn't, you have 10 kids paying for a class that pays the salary of the person teaching the class because you allow two other children to go in there for free, it's really not costing anything. Because you already made the money to pay the staff member. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm not
If, if I may, may I
Yeah.
This question. So just in, in general, in, in past years, the special revenue fund has been very successful over the last 15 to 20 years. And during that time, we've developed fund balance. And that fund balance, you know, we, we actually, you know, if a class costs $20 to, to provide it, say we charged 21. So that $20 we paid off to the class and then everybody who enrolls, we kind of made an extra dollar save. And with that extra little bit of money that we make from everybody, we paid overhead expenses. And over the years, those, the fund balance has grown and we've shifted more and more and more overhead type expenses in there. So financial assistance for kids who can't afford to pay, Director Barry is, is absolutely correct. When people came in and they weren't paying the, the going rate for the class, we just essentially paid that out of fund balance. Or, you know, it was, it was revenue that we never got, but the expenses still stayed. So we just used that little bit of extra that all the hundreds of other people had paid to kind of pay that bill, or to print our Discover guide, or to do all kinds of other overhead type expenses. The special revenue fund has many more expenses in it than just salaries for part-time The special revenue fund has many more expenses in it than just salaries for part-time and, and program staff. So, you know, I guess it's, 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 it's a matter of that can happen when we have fund balance and when we have sufficient fund, you know, it takes time to develop fund balance. And unfortunately, COVID has essentially, as you've heard earlier on, we don't have a fund balance anymore. And in fact, we're probably in the red. So right now, we don't have the ability to discount anybody's fees in a special revenue fund, because we won't have that revenue or that fund balance to pay the bill when, when the bill comes due. So, you know, it's, it's, yeah. And I, I get your point to, to what you were saying, Counselor Franco, about, you know, you're already paying somebody, you know, the staff member to be there. The fact is, most of our instructors are not paid an hourly rate. They're, they're paid a percentage of revenue that we collect. That is, that's a, that's a decision that the town has made to pay instructors in that way. And, and it has a lot of advantages, but right now, we're experiencing a disadvantage. When, when revenues go down, that formula doesn't work very well, because we, we, you know, the, for every person that registers, you know, the, the instructor gets a percentage of the revenue and we get a percentage of the revenue. So when fewer people participate, the instructor gets less and we get less. And like I say, it works well when we're doing a lot of programs, but it doesn't work well when we're not. So that's, that's kind of, you know, it's, it's, it's maybe reframing the question a little bit, and I hope that didn't confuse you more. I hope it helped clarify.
No, I understand what you're saying. So in a sense, and in this 6140, we're paying for all the staff members. They're going to, they're going to be there.
1064, that's only full-time staff members. It doesn't have any program staff in it. All the program staff are in 3240. All the, all the direct instructors and like that are in 3240. The only people in 10640 are me and the full-time supervisors and office staff at Spicer House.
So. I am going to stop talking right now. Thank you.
Any first-time speakers before we go to second time on this amendment? Counselor Bordelone, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just want to encourage my fellow counselors as well that, you know, as we, as we look at resilience and sustainability for $92,000 position to support our economic stability in our town and to be more resilient, look at this count from a diversity, equity and inclusion standpoint. You know, making sure that all children in our town have accessible availability to programming in its, you know, for diversity, equity and inclusion. Those three statements were used a lot. I also see that, you know, community center, we're, we're in our budget, we're going to be looking at the police budget and they're looking at a community service officer. I envision that drop-in center having basketball, youth dropping in, youth worker popping in. But I just can't stress enough that when you don't fund these achievement gaps and economic gaps, then you really are only offering program to a certain echelon of folks and other people are not allowed to participate. And Groton has a huge diverse tapestry of people. And I, I just encourage that we continue to fund that and allow for that diversity, equity and inclusion to happen. Thank you.
Are there any other first-time speakers before we go to second time? Okay, Counselor Franco, this is second time on the second amended figure.
I'd like to clarify, actually, my first time speaking was to clarify, and clarifying does not count against my time.
That was, that was seven minutes of clarifying, so.
So I'd just like to make a note that the overall increase on this budget is $71,903. It is a 4.3% increase. We are, it is currently on the table to increase it another 40,000. So we're going to increase this budget on this account 121,000, almost $123,000 from last, previous budget. So I just want to clarify that and put that on the floor. Mr. Locken, I am, I understand what you're saying. I don't think you quite maybe understand where I'm coming from on this. My point being is, if you are making the revenue to pay the staff, or, or it's not even a staff member, because I believe you're having contractors or somebody else that comes in and runs a program, if they have enough children in those programs to pay that person, and the other ones are free, it, I don't think it's really hurting Parks and Rec. If you look at maybe your dynamics of how you pay the person doing it, maybe you should do that maybe for the coming year. To the essence of, maybe you only accept so many scholarships per class, so that the person maybe instructing the class will get their pay of what they would normally get, and the Parks and Rec just doesn't, maybe doesn't get it, their money. I mean, there's a way to doing things. I understand it's supposed to be a revenue generator in 3240. I understand that, but we are in special circumstances. Because I think when you have, and you're generating $200 worth of revenue in a class and you throw two other kids in there that are basically free, you're still collecting the $200. And you're just adding two more children. I understand sometimes there's, I think during times like this, you have to think outside the box and look at different ways maybe of looking at things. But thank you very much.
Counselor Parker, you have the floor.
When they give out the scholarships, I do not believe they're full scholarships. There's a, it's a portion paid for each person to be able to participate. Say the program's $40 and the person doesn't have $40, they would look at and see what revenue they have in their account and maybe give them half off or a quarter off. It's not a full scholarship, everyone. It's, it's not. That's not how the program works. And the person that's running that program has to have so many people in order for them to, if they have to buy materials and supplies or anything like that, and they're at a spot. They're basically using the town property to host their event. So I don't know if a fee has to go back to the town. I'm just throwing this out there as an example. So 10 kids pay 50 bucks. And then there's three other kids that want to come into the program and can't pay that 50 bucks. They may get a scholarship, a portion off of what they would normally pay the full price. On the same token, that person that's running the program may have to pay a fee to the Town of Groton to use the space. So it's not a full thing. My other thing I want to bring up, we want to cut on the second, the First Amendment, we want to cut the program, but we just put a position in. So as I previously stated, we could have used that money somewhere else to assist the residents. Thank you.
I was muted. All right. Counselor O'Bri, are you raising your hand?
Yes.
Okay. You have the floor.
Okay. You know, there's a lot of dynamics that goes into this, but what Jerry said is, right now, they don't have anything to offer, you know, to balance the numbers. I think if we go with the first amended figure, I think it was 1,735,775. We would have money for the programs. And I think that the response to the programs is going to be very good. Maybe it'll come half and half, half that can pay and half that can't pay. But this would help cover for those who can't, because I would expect that probably there has to be a balance where the person that's doing the program gets enough money to be, make it worth being there. Of course, they've got to make it good enough so the people want to be there. So there's a lot of different aspects that come into it. But I think with that first motion, we're going to keep things moving forward and hopefully things are going to grow this summer with things being back open. But I don't think we need to go as much as 1,775. I think the 1,735,775, is that the number?
No. The, the first, the main motion is in the book on page 156, and it's 1,731,275. The first amended motion is 1,700,000 flat, and the second amended is 1,775,575.
Okay, I apologize then, because I'm a step ahead of myself. So I got to wait to see which ones go, which one don't go, and then I'll come in with the other number. Thank you. I apologize for the confusion.
That's okay. All right. So Counselor Bordelone, this would be your third time speaking on this, so we need consensus. We need six counselors to agree to have a third round. Okay. Any other first-time speakers wish to speak? If not, we will, we'll, we'll move to voting the second amended figure. Okay. So you're going to have to bear with me, because I'm going to need to track. And I'm assuming Ms. Watcher is with us for the, for tracking as well. We're going to be voting on the second amended figure of 1,775,575. All those in favor, please raise your hand and keep your hand up until I call your name. Baumgartner? Melendez?
My, my point of clarification, my computer cut out for a minute and I didn't hear. I just heard number and then.
Voting on your motion, 1,775,575. We're vote, I'm taking the in favor. So we have Baumgartner, Melendez, Bordelone, Granatowski.
Me, I'm sorry.
In favor?
Yes.
And Parker? Opposed, please raise your hand. Counselor Baumgartner, your hand is still up. Were you in favor or, okay. So the opposed, opposed are Franco, O'Bri, and Heed. And there should be no abstentions, because I think that's everybody. So we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 in favor, 3 opposed, 0 abstention. That number passes. Okay, because we are at eight counselors. All right, very good.
Clarification?
Yes.
Did the finance director say that this now has to stay in this account? Is that how this works?
We just.
So now going forward, this has to stay in this account. It can't go back to 3240?
It could be changed another year.
All right. Thank you.
All right, we are on to account 2010. This is on page 159. This will be Counselor Heed, but Counselor Heed, Mr. Burt notified us via the manager's report. This is the correct account, Mr. Burt, that we, we need the moderate, the modified number, correct?
Yes.
Do you have that number, Counselor Heed? If not, I can move it.
I do not have the number.
Okay, so for then, according to Mr. Burton, the finance director for account 2010, I will move 1,316,152. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Baumgartner.
Seconded by Baumgartner. And Mr. Burt or Director Landry, I'll let you explain.
Would you repeat the number?
1,316,152. And Mr. Burt or Ms. Ms. Landry can explain why we are moving that number.
Yes, we caught in there, if you look on page 161, under the 5280, insurance and risk management, you'll see the last couple of years, numbers like 23,000, 24,000, what was inadvertently left off for this year. It should have been 27,996, which brings the total up.
So then, because 5280 was accidentally zeroed out.
Right.
Director Landry and Mr. Burt are providing us with the correct number, which includes 27,996. That needs to be there for insurance and risk management. All right, so we have, I believe, Mr. Morrison and Mr. Goodhue, Goodhue here, and Mr. Barry is still here. Did one of you gentlemen wish to briefly present your account?
Sure. So this past year, the golf staff provided a safe outdoor recreational activity that attracted many new and returning players. Past membership increased by 45%. Revenue from rounds increased by $117,000. Based on survey results, golfers playing at Shenacostan annually bring in approximately 400,000 to the local economy through meals, lodging and gas. The proposed FYE 22 budget continues to provide the same level of quality golf experience. Personnel services decreased due to reduction in post-employee benefits and hiring a new mechanic, starting at an entry level. The increase in seasonal personnel was the result of the Connecticut Minimum Wage Plan. Operating expenses increased primarily to fees associated with the fuel management system, the purchase of a reel and bed knife grinding machine and a cart lift. The grinding machine sharpened specialty blades on golf course mowers. The grinding machine is 25 years old and parts were, are no longer available. The cart lift allows a mechanic to work on an equipment at an appropriate safe height versus working on equipment on the floor.
Thank you. And I just wanted to remind counselors, I believe we just authorized an increase in certain memberships, but not greens fees, correct?
Yes, the membership for adults, associate and associate and plus increased by 3%.
And that would go into your financing plan, so your season membership financing plan is where that increased revenue will show up then, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you. Are there counselors with questions or comments for Mr. Barry or Mr. Morrison or Mr. Goodhue?
Oh, I'm sorry. I should remind, this is a special revenue fund. So all of the fees, all of the costs associated with running the golf course, except capital improvements, are covered by fees collected for season pass memberships and green fees.
Thought for a minute there was frozen, because nothing was moving and no one was saying anything. Okay. Counselor Bordelone, you have the floor.
Thank you. Can you speak to the grounds maintenance, what's driving that cost this year?
The, the ground, which page are you referring to?
Let me make sure we're on, we're on 2010, right? I'm on the right thing? Yes, yes, parks.
Yes. I think she's looking at two, on the cost centers, Mr. Barry, 20100, grounds maintenance? Is that the one you're referring to, Counselor Bordelone?
Yeah, that's correct.
Oh, okay. All right. So you're asking for an explanation of the 700,000? I mean, the, the grounds maintenance is, there's a number of these accounts that go into, that make up the grounds maintenance cost center.
The number kind of moves from year to year a little bit, I see. What was, what did you guys, what did you request last year?
Well, last year we requested 867.
Right.
097. And this year is 700,000. I don't know, Eric, could you?
And what did you, yeah, last year, in, as far as you're, you're requested, but you got the, is it 607 or?
Well, that's what our estimate was for this year.
Okay.
And we're. And we're requesting less. I, I guess I'd have to look at each specific line item to total up why, what the difference is.
Because I see the estimated says 607, what you asked for. So this is what you, and this is now you're going up, like, but you, I don't know, I'm just a little confused.
Yeah, the numbers, it does jump around a little bit.
Yeah.
I don't know, it's, John is, is Eric still in the queue or no?
Yes, Eric, Mr. Morrison is here.
Okay.
Did you want, just-
Can you hear me?
Yeah, just, Mr. Morrison, I'm sorry. The, the estimated is what they're, what they ask, let's see, how to explain. The various columns, the, the estimated number has nothing to do with what they asked. It's actually where they are now.
Correct.
So, so it's actually, if you look at it, it's a decrease from 2020, if I'm reading that correctly.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Morrison, you have the floor?
Do you have a specific account that you have a question on, or just the total grounds maintenance account?
It's a 2000.
So the 2010 account?
Correct.
So we have a vehicle account that was switched over from Public Works a few years ago, which increased our budget substantially. Our vehicles used to be in the fleet account. Now they've been shifted to the golf course, so that's why you see a big increase a couple of years ago. And depending on, say, you know, seasonal personnel has been tough to get the last couple of years. So we kind of had, we budget that we're going to full, fill all those seasonal positions, but we had a tough time. So if you look at the seasonal account, which is 5103, we budget a fair amount of dollars, but our estimate is pretty low because we haven't had people in those positions. So that's kind of why you see a big fluctuation the past few years.
Counselor Bordelon, do you have further comments? You still have time, or should we go on to other speakers?
So I guess what I'm asking about the ground maintenance, you're saying part of the fleet account came into this section?
Yes, the fleet number was moved. I don't know what year it was. Maybe Cindy can tell me what year it was. But if you look at, I forget the account number. The account number is not there anymore because we moved it. But we used to budget a substantial amount of money for fleet replacement, and now that has moved to 5420, which is vehicles.
Okay. Okay, and then, all right, all right, I'll stop for now. Thank you.
We have Counselor Heed, you have the floor?
Sure, thank you. So this is one of those accounts where there's income and expenses, and they get kind of bungled, so, not bungled, like mixed up. So I, I see that like 20100, 20101, and 02 all amount to 1,288,156, which is, if you go over to page 161, basically that's the number plus the insurance that we just moved of 1316,152, right? So within that number, there's, I think it sounded to me like you were talking about 20102, because that's the number that went up quite a bit over the previous years. But I guess when I'm looking at this, I also take a look at the financing plan of, which is right below that on page 160, it's 1397,433. What is that number? Like, that's, that's the income that you're taking in, right?
That's correct. So that's, that's season memberships, greens fees, cart rentals, and lease fees, which is what par four pays for, to us. So we're, we're projecting based on, and, and these numbers are calculated on looking at historical information is how these numbers are calculated, with the exception of the the lease fees, because that's set in a contract.
All right, so what's the difference between these two numbers? This is the financing plan covering the expense of all this, and then it's adding a little bit of cushion?
Yeah, so the financing, we're projecting to bring in 1,397,433 and spend less than that. The difference will go into fund balance, kind of like a rainy day fund, and I think it was two years ago, we ran into a situation where we had approximately $150,000 in fund balance and had 13 weekends in the spring where it rained either on a Saturday or Sunday. And that decimated our revenue, and we ended up using all of our fund balance in order to, you know, balance the books. So and it had taken us like 10 years to, to build up that amount. We tried to keep about 10% of the total operating budget in fund balance. So whatever additional revenue that we make beyond our expenses this year will go into fund balance. And that doesn't get used, that it's a rainy day fund.
So, okay, thank you so much.
Any other first-time speakers before we go for second? Counselor Bordelon?
I guess my question is, so I see that basically the revenues come in, there's not, it's not a driving moneymaker, it's an asset to the community. So the number comes in, the 1,397,000, and it looks like, so you guys requested a higher number than the manager, so why would the manager lower that number if it's, the revenues coming in is supposed to cover that? I guess I'm confused. If I'm reading this correctly. So I see the requested amount was 1,323,940, and then the manager changed, 1,288,156, and then, as Counselor Heed just stated, 1,397,433 is just the revenues coming in. So why wouldn't your guys' requested number just be your requested number? Why does that change? I'm just curious. Maybe that's for John, I guess, or somebody.
We did that here before, right?
That, Madam Mayor?
It's, it's, I'm sorry.
Counselor, Counselor Parker, did you have a point of clarification?
Yes, aren't, isn't the number that we're supposed to be looking at is 1,316,152 compared to their request was 1,323,940? So it's only a difference of like 7,000 and change. That's the number, Counselor Bordelon, not the 1,288,156. Because there was an era of that 27,996, $27,996 that was left off on that, but manager's budget.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that, because I just have the note here before I got the clarifying point of the era, but I had flagged it on my page as to-
I thought that might be the case.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. And, but 7,000 is still.
So that's, Mr. Bert, do you want to address that?
Because it did-
Yeah.
Place by the 27. The 23 should have been-
Okay, so the, the numbers we were given on OPEB originally were changed later on. That's, that's the reason for the change. They were lowered once we got new numbers.
Oh, right.
So, okay.
So we had requested 47, and that was the original number given, and then it was reduced to 12. So that's part of the difference between the, our original request and the town manager's number.
So that's, that's on page 161, cost center 5170, other post-employment benefits is where you're talking about, correct, Mr. Bert?
Correct. And, and it's not really the department requesting, it's just something that's given, you know, by the administration.
Are we, are we set, or do you have further, Counselor Bordelon?
No, I'm okay right now. Thank you.
Okay, we will vote on 2010 Shenacostet Golf Course in the amount of 1,316,152. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you. And we are on to Recreation and Senior Activities, account 3240 on page 164 is where the narrative begins. And the numbers are on 165, and I believe we are on Counselor Obree, I think. Give me one second, I gotta switch pens. My pen died.
Hey, Madam Mayor, could you just state that maybe we should also send an email out to everyone else that's going to be looking at this budget to note that error so they're ready for that, because it is confusing a little bit.
Yes, that would be a Mr. Bert thing. Yes, thank you for reminding. All right, Counselor Obree, account 3240, please.
For the account 3240, I move the figure 1,251,702.
Moved by Obree and seconded by Bordelon for account 3240 in the amount of 1,251,702. I'm not sure if we need introductions, as we've been discussing, but Mr. Berry, did you want to add anything to this discussion?
Well, yeah, so the 3240 is a special revenue fund, which we've talked about, and it, and so expenses for this fund are paid through program fees. And it has no impact to the general fund. Expenses covered include instructor fees, seasonal and part-time staff, instructors, program materials and supplies, and other associated costs with running the program. Our budget is proposed to, is 4.3% or 56,800 is lower than our 2021 budget. The decrease reflects changes in both personnel and operating expenses. Some of the highlighted changes in the proposed budget include a reduction in seasonal personnel due to adjustments of summer staff camp schedules, combining two part-time positions into one regular position, resulting in a decrease in part-time personnel and an offsetting increase in regular part-time personnel. And that's something that the council approved, I think, within the last six weeks or so. And also a reduction in professional technical services in anticipation of a gradual return to pre-COVID program numbers. And at this point, I'm happy to answer any, any questions.
Counselor Bordelon, you have the floor?
Thank you. You know, obviously, I'm in full support of this. I think, you know, the, this population was hit the hardest with COVID. And so I know they're going to be desk, you know, really needing the socialization and support and services moving forward. Do you feel that you guys are ready to implement, since you haven't had a lot of staff in that building? Is there any, any unexpected things that are going to happen that you may need or thoughts to, you know, get back up and operational, as you stated, very slowly, but I'm just really kind of looking to make sure that you guys are going to be supported? Because right now, more than ever, this population wants to get back to normal, and I think this is a very important service.
Thank you, I, I agree. I think we are ready, you know, staff, we've spent the last 12 months preparing, re-preparing, and I think we're, we're ready to get back. You know, there are going to be some challenges with opening up the building. I mean, we've already run into challenges with the Wi-Fi, with the new Wi-Fi in the building, and instructors not being able to not have the adequate web service in order to be able to teach from the building. They've had to go back to their house, homes and, and run virtual classes. So, you know, we're, have been working with IT to try to straighten that out and get that working. You know, given the investment that, that they just put into that building. But I, I think, I, I think we are ready. I mean, I'm sure we're going to run into, you know, a couple of hiccups. But, you know, this program has adapted pretty well, and I think we'll be able to meet whatever challenges face us over the, over the next few months as we kind of get back into a regular, regular programming.
Thank you. Has there been any talk to have any vaccination clinics at the senior center for folks?
I, because of the number of vaccinations sites in other locations, I don't believe there's been any discussion, but we have, the, the senior center staff has been heavily involved in providing access for seniors. You know, we've continued this year. We were lucky enough to have one driver that stayed on, and, you know, so we were able to continue to drive folks to doctor's appointments. We did work with the VNA to do, well, that was a flu clinic. We also staff helped with set up 120 vaccine appointments, because a lot of these, you know, everything's, a lot of things are done online now, and this, you know, the population that we serve aren't particularly skilled and comfortable with doing things online, so we were really busy for a while providing, you know, people would call, and we were able to set up a point, help them set up appointments online, along with giving folks rides. So while we've learned a vaccination site, we have been supporting the seniors in Groton through other ways.
Great, thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you for all that you do.
Counselor Franco, you have the floor?
Thank you. So it seems as though your fund balance is in the negative, and you're anticipating revenue is at the 1 point, I'm just going to call it 1.2 million. What happens if you don't come in at this revenue point?
We, the way the special revenue fund operates is we we operate based on the revenue that we generate. So i- in other words, if we offer a class and it doesn't generate, you know, we don't meet our minimums in, in order to cover our expenses, we don't run that class. And that model works very well until you have a pandemic. And, you know, there are, you know, one of the challenges that faced us is typically, and I think I mentioned this earlier, is we have a considerable infusion of cash in April, May, and June, so right at the end of the fiscal year. But what happens in the start of the new fiscal year is that's when you have all your expenses come in. So typically, we will, like I said, generate a lot of revenue in the spring to cover our expenses. Well, last year, that didn't happen. So we had all of these, we had expenses that we had incurred, and then we lost that three-month window to generate the revenue to cover all of those expenses.
And as you said before, you don't anticipate the summer programs to be stellar, is that what you were saying? You're not expecting to get into a good way into-
Yeah, I, I, I think there's going to be some hesitancy among residents to jump back into programs. And, you know, we're still operating, you know, our summer camps, we're looking at operating, our day camp, we're looking at operating the way we did last year, which is limited number, limited sizes, and, you know, unless that, we get new guidance from the state- And, you know, unless that, we get new guidance from the state and from the health district, we're not going to be able to have the number of campers that we've had in the past. So, and there's, unfortunately, there's increased expenses due to, you know, camper ratios and things like that. So it actually costs us a little bit more to run camp with less kids. But we feel that's a really essential service. You know, there's a lot of families that rely on summer camp so that both parents can, you know, go to work. And so we, we think that's an important community service and we'll offer that again.
Absolutely. And is the senior center open?
We are waiting to open. It's going to be a graduated open. First, the fitness center is going to open up under, you know, particular protocol. The senior center has not been closed for the last year. They have, you know, we have delivered over, what, 6,300 grab and go meals? So we felt it was important that seniors have the ability to get affordable meals. So we set up a grab and go program this last year. And we've, like I said, had 6,300 grab and go meals go out. They've done a number of outdoor events in the fall. They were doing outdoor classes in the, in the hockey rink. And they plan to start that again as soon as we can kind of open up the building and start offering programs. Again, we're going to go back to outside programming. And so it, the doors are locked now, but there's a lot going on, kind of both inside and outside. They're doing virtual, virtual programming. They have kind of group chats where, because a lot of these seniors, you know, we've all been impacted by not being able to see our friends and whatnot. And that's been particularly hard when you're the only person in a, in a household. So when you can't get out, you know, and see other people and there's not people coming to your house, it's been particularly hard on seniors. So, you know, the staff have set up programs where people will zoom in, you know, kind of almost like a council meeting. And you see all these different faces and you get a chance to chat with somebody you haven't seen with six months and just kind of catch up. So they've, they're trying to combat the isolation. So that they're doing those kinds of things along with AARP taxes. We've set up a program where people drop off their taxes outside of the building. The taxes are done and then they meet outside of the building to go over that. So they've been doing a lot of different things to, like I said, the doors have been closed, but there's been a lot going on at the senior center.
Oh, I have seen that they've contributed a lot to the community during COVID.
Yeah, they, they raised about $35,000 and, for a Community First Meals Project and gave out 7,000 meals.
But the, but the building is not open and people cannot go in for programs at this time? And do you have an anticipated date that you may be able to open?
We are, well, right now, it looks like it would be about April 19th. That's, the town managers indicated that public buildings would reopen on the 19th. And that's when we're expecting that. It would be a graduated open. Again, the fitness center would open up first and then it would slowly continue to open up until we get back to normal, probably by the end of the summer.
Okay, so overall in the budget, I'm seeing that your revenue, looking from 2020, if you look at that number, because I'm sort of trying to skip over the COVID year, because it's really a wacky number there. But mostly, it's an increase. And I, it's hard to be able to not go back to a previous year, but it's like a 42% increase you're looking at from 2020. And I know 2020 was, you know, that budget you were, was sort of impacted by COVID as well.
Right, right. Yeah, and like I said, you know, we collect a lot of money for summer programs. And so I think if you had seen, you know, if we had been able to capture those few months, then, you know, that 423,927 would have been significantly higher.
So my question is, like, if you see the revenue, if it doesn't come into at this number and it's down low again, like down in the 500s, how are you going to, what are you going to do?
Well, again, we manage this budget to our revenue. So i- if we're not, if there's a decrease in revenue, there's going to be an offsetting decrease in expenses. So if we don't run a, a, a class, we don't get that revenue, but we're also not buying all the material that would have been associated with that class. So there's offsetting, expenses are going to offset the revenue.
So your part-time personnel and seasonal personnel, you just.
Yeah, all of that would, all of that would be reduced because, you know, those are our part-time instructors. If a class doesn't run, we're not paying them, so that's going to be reduced.
So we just allocated 40,000 for scholarships, and what if those classes don't run? And we just gave you 40,000 for scholarships for, for classes that may not run?
Well, I'm sure that there are going to be classes that are, that are going to run. And actually, I think, I think this year, we're going to probably have more scholarship requests just given the financial situation of most families. You know, we've, most everybody's been impacted and I would expect to see the number of requests be up this year.
So if, but if your numbers happen to come in really low again this year due to COVID and people's insecurity of wanting to be in, with public and in enclosed spaces? So these people that you're saying that are part-time seasonal, the overtime pay, regular part-time, social security and retirement, those would all drastically go down and your operating expenses would as well?
Yes, absolutely.
Money in your fund balance to be able to float you?
Right, yeah, materials and supplies would go down. Professional technical services would go down. I mean, if people aren't signing up for programs, we're not incurring the associated expense with that program. So all of these estimates would be considerably lower.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any first time speakers before we go second? Counselor Borlon, you have the floor?
Thank you. Under the Parks and Rec budget, we talked about the scholarship. Under this, looking at this section being recreational programs, this is where your, the camp is located, as I'm seeing, correct?
That is correct, yes.
In the past, if I remember correctly, as a former camp counselor many moons ago, there were scholarship programs, I know the city has them and the town has them as well for rec, is that correct?
Yes, that, that was the $40,000 that we had discussed during the 1064 discussion.
So that's why I'm just double clarifying. So some of that money is not just joining soccer or basketball subsidy. This is also helping with childcare expenses as well, correct?
Yeah, so folks that are attending summer camp, if they're using that as childcare, yes, we get requests for, to award scholarships for summer camps. And that is where the, the $40,000 would help, help those families.
Okay, and that would help that area as well, the camp program. So, yeah, no, I feel even more encouraged in supporting that because, you know, one of the things that's, we're finding is the older folks were watching children for family members and now because of COVID, they can't. And so they're having to find other means and, and I think you're going to see an increase as well. And I hope that the advertising will be there so that folks know that this program, that the scholarships even more so are available. And if any other programs or grants become available, I hope that funding can come your way to support that enrichment of our senior and our children. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other hands, we will vote on 3240 in the amount of 1,251,702. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Berry, Mr. Locken, appreciate you coming out this evening. At this point, I would entertain.
Motion to recess?
Sure, thank you. Motion to recess, is there a second?
Second, Borlon.
Motion to recess by Parker, seconded by Borlon. All those in favor of recessing, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are in recess at 9:24 PM to meet again on Monday, Monday, April 5th at 6:00 PM. Thank you, everybody, have a good night.
Good night.
Thanks for coming out and be well.